Are we live?
Can someone allow us to show our video?
Ready?
Rich, you should be able to start your video.
It says I cannot start my video.
Okay, you may need to continue the meeting in just audio. While we work on that.
Then I put on a coat and tie.
I'm sure it looks great. All right, everyone, thank you so much for being here and for your patience. As you can see, we are in Conference Room C. If you do choose not to join us in Conference Room C, you can, in your in-city hall, you can listen in and participate in Conference Room A, which has full audio up and running. Chambers is open, but the audio is not working. So Conference Room C or Conference Room A are your two options, and I'll always Zoom as well. So we are here to start our regular meeting. Welcome to the City Council Regular Meeting this Monday evening on March 20th. I now call this meeting to order. I invite all to join in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which extends one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Deputy Clerk, would you please call the roll?
With pleasure, Mayor. Councilmember Hedges?
Here.
Councilmember Lorraine?
Here.
Councilmember Newsom?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Diaz Nash?
Here.
Mayor Lee?
Here. We're excited to be here in person with options for those who choose not to be in person to participate virtually. There are several ways to participate. For those attending in person, complete a yellow request-to-speak slip and hand it to the deputy clerk. If participating remotely, use the raise-your-hand feature in Zoom, and you will be called upon at the appropriate time. If calling in via phone, press star nine to raise your hand, and when called upon, press star six to unmute. These options for public comment will remain available until I close the public comment period for each specific item. We'll start with ceremonial item for Women's History Month, a proclamation. Whereas Women's History Month celebrates the contributions women have made to the United States and recognizes the achievements of women over the course of American history in a variety of fields. And whereas this year's theme, set by the National Women's History Alliance, is celebrating women who tell our stories in recognition of the ceaseless work of women who have contributed to print, radio, TV, stage, screen, blogs, podcasts, and more. And whereas women who have devoted their lives and talents to producing art, pursuing truth, reflecting the human condition, deserve to be recognized for the barriers they've broken and the challenges they've overcome. And whereas women across all cultures serve in roles that are central to the advancement of society, and Women's History Month is a time to reaffirm our commitment to achieving gender equality, reflect our progress made towards resolving workforce disparities, and recognize that much remains to be done to improve the status of women and girls. And whereas societies where women are given opportunities for equal participation are stronger, and in order to achieve peace, security, and full respect for human rights, women must never be denied a voice. And now, therefore, the City Council of the City of San Mateo hereby proclaims the month of March 2023 as Women's History Month. Also my birthday month. All right, I am especially pleased to do another ceremonial item to recognize the contributions of one of my favorite women in San Mateo. She is a legend, a living legend, and is the recipient of this year's Woman of the Year California State Assembly Award. And so this proclamation is for you, Ms. Gloria Brown, the co-founder or the founder of the African-American Community Health Advisory Council, which is now the Bay Area Community Health Advisory Council, an esteemed and impactful nonprofit in our community, and also a neighbor and advocate in North Central. So this is for you, Ms. Gloria Brown, if you don't mind joining us at the podium, so the folks can see you. Whereas the California State Assembly recognized Gloria Rhodes Brown as their 2023 Woman of the Year, honoring her 55 years of commitment to improving community health and wellness. Whereas Gloria has generously devoted her time and talents to the development of health, nutrition, and support programs, and has served on multiple boards and advisory committees dedicated to improving the lives of underserved community members throughout San Mateo County. Whereas Gloria's notable accomplishments include co-founding the Mills Peninsula Health Services African-American Community Health Advisory Council, developing health education programs and events such as the Women's Health Conference, Men's Health Symposium, the Soul Stroll for Health Walk, which is currently underway, and Resource Fair. In addition, Gloria had developed programs addressing Alzheimer's, domestic violence, elder abuse, and caregivers' education. And whereas her board and committee commitments include Mills Peninsula Board of Directors, the Silicon Valley Community Foundation, the African Women's Development Fund USA Board, the Faith Committee of US SF Helen Diller Family Comprehensive Cancer Center, trustee of the Notre Dame de Mir University Board of Directors, Facing Our History Americus Advisory Committee, the St. James Community Foundation Board of Directors, the North Central Students, and Rosanna Wilson Harris Scholarship Foundations. These are merely a handful of the organizations she's served. That's actually true. This is not even a fraction of the organizations. Whereas this evening's commendation is but one of several special recognitions and awards she has earned throughout the years of her tireless work and hours of devotion to those in need. And whereas it is with great appreciation for Gloria Rhodes Brown that we wish her well as she continues the great work she does for our community, and now, therefore, be it resolved that the City of San Mateo hereby recognizes Gloria Rhodes Brown from the City of San Mateo, signed from Mayor Lee. Thank you, Ms. Gloria.
Wow, I just got back, returned from Sacramento, and I was just hoping that I would arrive in time. And thanks to Trina Pierce, who said that she would stand in my stead. So thank you, Trina, very much. I'd just like to thank all of you. This is a wonderful recognition to be recognized by elected officials in your own city, the city that I grew up in, and the city that I returned to after college, raised my family, and have given back as much as I could give back over the last 55 years. It's just been a real heartwarming experience. So thank you again. I look forward to maybe not 55 more years, but my mother lived to 104. So maybe I have a few good years still left in me. Thank you again.
We're counting on it.
So Mayor Lee, maybe we could get a picture with council?
Yes, please. Yes, Ms. Gloria, would you mind doing us the honor of taking a photo with the council altogether? Yes, thank you. I think now, yeah.
Maybe can we do it near the flag? We'll meet you by the flag.
So that concludes our ceremonial items. Deputy Clerk, would you please read the consent calendar?
With pleasure, Mayor. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered by the council to be routine and will be enacted by one motion without discussion. If discussion is desired, that item may be removed and considered separately. Item number three, City Council Meeting Minutes Approval. Item number four, City Council Appointments to External Agencies and Liaison Roles Amendment. Item number five, Termination of Proclamation of Local Emergency. Item number six, San Mateo Building Decarbonization Strategy Appropriation and Agreement. Item number seven, Donton Electric Vehicle Chargers Appropriation. Item number eight, Housing Element Update Consulting Services Amendment. Item number nine, General Plan Housing Element and Housing Successor Agency 2022 Annual Progress Reports. Item number 10, Library Department Classification and Position Updates. Item number 11, San Mateo Public Library Foundation Operating Lease Amendment. Item number 12, Axon Air Unmanned Aerial Systems Program Amendment. Item number 13, Police Department Roof Improvements Budget Appropriation and Agreement. Item number 14, Construction Special Inspection Services for the Clean Water Program Amendment. Item number 15, Purchase of Replacement Digestor Sludge Transfer Pumps Change Order. Item number 16, School Zone Speed Limit Phase One Agreement. And finally, item number 17, Martin Luther King Community Center Small Kitchen Remodel Contract.
Is there any member of the council?
Is there any member of the council that wishes to pull an item from the consent calendar?
Or recuse themselves? I can chime in here. So Councilmember Newsom has a conflict of interest on item 16, the speed limit agreement. It doesn't require pulling the item from the consent calendar, but he has a real property interest within 500 feet of one of the segments that is subject to a speed limit reduction. Therefore, he should be recusing himself from the item. The item does not need to be pulled from the consent calendar, but instead, he should be recorded as abstaining on that item. But the council can simply vote on the entire consent calendar as it normally does, is the typical announcement.
So based on what the attorney's, based on what the city attorney's advised, I will recuse myself from item number 16 on the consent calendar, and will go ahead and vote on all the others.
Is there a motion?
Before you take a motion, did you want to ask members of the public one his comment?
Yes. Would any members of the public wish to comment on any of the consent calendar items? Now would be the time to make your comment. This is for consent calendar items only. Is that one speaker's?
I have no request to speak in chamber and no requests in Zoom. If you wish to speak and you are participating in person, please hand a yellow speaker slip to the deputy clerk right over here. I'll give you a few moments to do that. I don't see any requests to speak in person. We have no request to speak on the consent calendar.
That will close public comment period. Can I ask for a motion on the floor?
I will make a motion to pass the consent calendar.
Deputy Clerk, would you please call the roll?
With pleasure. Deputy Mayor Diaz Nash?
Yes.
Councilmember Lorraine?
Yes.
Councilmember Hedges?
Yes.
Councilmember Newsom?
Yes, with the exception of item 16.
And Mayor Lee?
Yes.
The motion carries five zero.
Thank you so much. And next on the agenda is public comment. Members of the public who wish to comment on any item not appearing on the agenda, this is the time to address the City Council. State law prevents council from taking action on any matter not on the agenda. Your comments may be referred to staff for follow-up. This public comment section is generally limited to a total of 15 minutes. However, that is subject to council's discretion and can be extended if council wishes to do so. If needed, an opportunity for additional public comment may also be provided later in the agenda. Are there any members of the public wishing to comment on non-agendaist items?
Madam Mayor, I have no request to speak in the room and no requests to speak on Zoom.
Okay, thank you. We'll close that public comment period and move on to our first public hearing item number 18, which is the fiscal year 2022 to 23 Comprehensive Fee Schedule Amendment for Planning Support Fee. Do we have a presentation from Manera?
Yes, good evening, honorable council members. I'm joining via Zoom, and I'm having a hard time turning my video on. Not a surprise, given all the challenges tonight. But I'm happy to provide a brief overview of the item before you tonight. So I'm Manu Asandia, I'm the Planning Manager with the Community Development Department. And the item before you tonight is to amend the planning support fee that is associated with the building permit review for zoning and condition compliance. This particular fee was last updated in 2022. However, during implementation, staff found that for large projects, the fees that would have resulted based on the previous update would have been significantly higher and incommensurate with the level of effort that would have gone into the review of those building permits. Therefore, staff brought on Matrix Consulting Group to conduct a focused fee study for this planning support fee. And at this point, staff is recommending amending the fee to be based on the building permit fee itself and primarily specifically to be 10% of the building permit fee, and also have a minimum fee of $210 to cover the smaller projects, which is typically the level of effort required for those projects. The item is a public hearing because state law requires that any fee amendments be conducted through a public hearing process. And therefore, we are here tonight to present this item. I do have Kushpu Engle from Matrix Consulting Group here as well on Zoom to answer any questions that the council members may have. With that, in conclusion, staff recommends that the council adopt a resolution to approve the amendments to the planning support fee for building permits to be more commensurate with the level of effort that goes into these permit reviews. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Does any council member have any questions? No, Councilmember Hedges?
Thanks for asking. No, I don't have any questions.
What did he say? Okay.
Thank you for asking. I don't have any questions. I'm hollering.
Does any member of the public wish to make a public comment on this item?
I have no request to speak in the room and no requests to speak in Zoom.
So we'll close public comment. Is there any comments or are we ready for a motion or to adopt a resolution? Okay, do I have a motion to adopt a resolution to approve the amendments to a planning support fee for building permits?
So move. Give it to Adam.
Okay. I think we have Councilmember Lorraine and Hedges with a second. Deputy Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Lorraine?
Yes.
Councilmember Hedges?
Yes.
Councilmember Newsom?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Diaz Nash?
Yes.
And Mayor Lee?
Yes.
The motion carries five zero.
Thank you so much. Moving on to old business, item number 19, City Council Priority List Draft Review. I believe we have a presentation from our management analyst, Denise Garcia.
Hi, welcome. Good evening. Nice to see you all. My name is Denise Garcia, and I'm a management analyst in the City Manager's Office, and I'm here to present a draft review of the City Council Priority List. So here's a timeline of the City Council goal-setting process. The first step of the process took place on February 11, 2023, where City Council reviewed current priorities, added new priorities, removed completed and operationalized items, and there was also a moment for the public to make comments as well. The second step is taking place today, March 20, and City Council will review the draft priority list and work plan, and there will also be a moment for public comment. And the third step is taking place April 17, 2023, where we will adopt the City Council Priority List. And the fourth step, which usually takes place between September to October, we will conduct a mid-cycle review so we can provide updates to City Council and to the public on our priorities. So for tonight, the City Council will review the following sections of our priority list. The first is the wording of the council priorities. The second is the proposed work plan. The third is the additional resources required. And lastly, we'll look at the resource requirement intensity. So first, we'll start with the council priority and proposed work plan. Following the Blue Sky Workshop, staff made adjustments to the wording of several items based on the feedback that was captured. Staff also merged similar items requested by City Council. This was staff's best attempt to word City Council's intention and to create a work plan for this upcoming fiscal year. Staff is requesting your review at this time. This is the opportunity to provide comments or suggestions on the wording of each priority and the proposed work plan. We want to ensure that the priorities and the work plan reflect the City Council's original intention and address your expectations. The last two items we'd like the City Council to review are the additional resources and resource requirement intensity for each priority. The additional resources are estimates of additional resources that are not already included in the budget. Many of the priorities listed have no additional resources identified on the draft priority list, and there are two reasons for this. The first reason is that the resources are already included in the budget. For example, the city's business plan or capital improvement program. An example of this is the priority number 20, which states reconstruct all failed streets in San Mateo by 2026. This item already has $8.1 billion budgeted, and so there is no additional need for other resources. The second reason is that an initial step is required, which is a study session followed by options on how to proceed. So until council direction is provided on how implementation will occur, the only resources dedicated are staff time to do the analysis. An example of this is priority number 13, which states explore the implementation of a customer response management or 3-1-1 system. To summarize, in most cases, just because it does not have any additional resources listed does not necessarily mean there are no resources needed to complete the priority. It is important to note that the additional resources column only identifies the needs for the 2023 to 2024 fiscal year work plan. The last section for your review is resource requirement intensity. This column differs and does not necessarily correlate with the additional resources column. Rather, this column provides a high-level estimate of the intensity of resources needed to commit to a full implementation of each item, which may be beyond the 2023 to 2024 fiscal year work plan. So for tonight, City Council action required is to review the priorities and proposed work plans for fiscal year 2023 to 2024 to see if they adequately address the council's intentions and expectations, review additional resources required and resource intensity, and lastly, recommend adjustments to any of the columns reviewed in the draft priority list. I also have the City Manager here, as well as all the department heads, available to answer any questions that you may have on any particular item. With that, I'm open to questions.
Thank you, Denise. Excellent presentation. And this streamlined process is looking really great. So we've slimmed down to 32 priorities, sorry, 32 from 57, 55. We consider that a win in itself. Does council have any questions to start?
I do.
Through the mayor?
Yes, please.
How will you determine, or how will it be determined, the timeline that all of these occur?
Well, so, and so everything we have in the work plan is what we intend to accomplish over the next fiscal year. So, and then in terms of the sequencing there, that's going to depend on which departments are involved and, you know, the level of intensity of the individual work plan item. So it's going to depend, but, you know, and that's kind of where we, where we come back in the September, October timeframe to give a better feel for when exactly you're going to see that. Generally, at that point, we'll get an idea about, you know, you're going to see that in study session. You already see it in study session, you'll see it in study session during the fall or the winter or the spring. If that, does that answer your question?
That's, that's very helpful. Also, how you, there are some things like the streets, which are ongoing, they're happening. And then there are other things like the 3-1-1 system, which have to get started. And how do you slot the not even begun into the already underway?
Well, right, and that's, I mean, that's why we're doing this now. You know, so, so we're not, I mean, some of these items, I mean, technically, this is the fiscal year 23, 24 strategic plan or priority, the council priorities. And so, you know, right now, you know, we just finished up and are getting approval for what the work plan will look like for next fiscal year. In between now and July 1st, we'll start planning for when we're actually going to be able to get started on some of these initiatives and preparing for the study sessions. So that's, that's all part of, part of the process behind the scenes. And again, the September, October, sort of the midpoint review is to let council know where we are with, with these individual items. So we'll list out at that point, here what, here's the work plan, and here's the status. And again, that's where we're, we will talk about when we expect to come forward with the study session or if we are behind on a certain item. But, you know, unless we come out proactively and say differently, the work plan is what we expect that, that work plan to be for the next year. And, and we will, you know, when we talk about having the resources that are needed to do the work, that means we're planning to make sure that we can get it done and don't need to bring in extra resources to do it.
Thank you.
Through the mayor?
I believe Councilmember Hedges asked, and I'd be happy to let him go first, if that's fine.
Go ahead, Adam. I can go next.
Okay, thank you. Denise and staff, I I just wanted to confirm whether item number sorry, I just managed to lose it, 11. Considering the adoption of wage theft protections was indeed meant to proceed. I guess I personally don't remember. I do remember that before during the Blue Sky Session, it was a C priority, and there were some discussions about whether to remove C priorities, offering no judgments on whether it, you know, I just wanted to confirm that others recall that there was a decision made to keep it.
Yeah, I raised the issue. We adopted as, as part of the, the reorganization process of the, of the Blue Sky Workshop, that, that B and C items would no longer be tracked on, on the priorities. So at that point, we had to disposition all of the B and C items to determine, would they be taken off the list, or would they move up to be an item that's on the list? And wage theft, there was, I can't remember if it was unanimous, but we certainly had three people that were interested in pursuing wage theft as a priority item.
Thank you. Those are my questions.
Councilmember Hedges?
Yes, so my issue was number 11 as well. I have a lot of experience with this. People who are represented don't usually have that problem, but this usually falls on the lower-wage people who need it, their wages more than anyone else. And not only And not only do we have one of the most progressive, if not the most progressive minimum wage programs in San Mateo, there are many other ways to steal wages. Forcing people to work under threat of losing their job off the clock is very common. It's very common in the industry I came from and non-represented people. And so just a little added information, it's my understanding and should follow up on this, that the county is actually proposing to do a unit that will actually investigate these. So my recommendation, since we have such progressive minimum wage here, is to have an ability to do an intake here. But once the county gets set up to forward it to the county for investigation. And I think that would certainly cut the costs for us if we do that. So I think there's hope that we can actually protect people that really need it and also work with the county to make this happen. Thank you.
Okay, so that doesn't, if I'm hearing you correctly, council member Hedges, it doesn't change the, the proposed work plan as it's written, correct?
No, it just may change the way we do it.
I understand. Okay. Any other questions? Okay. So then I would like to ask for clarification about the community budgeting process. I understand that we're, the intent is to design a, an outreach plan and bring a proposal to council. And I wanted to better understand how, you know, what the thinking is behind, behind our process and how it will be laid out.
Yeah, I think the first step in a, in any sort of community budgeting process would be to, to come forward with the study session relatively early in the fiscal year to get an idea from the city council about what type of framework they would, they would like for this community budgeting process. You could, you know, do anything from sort of very, very open-ended to having council create sort of a framework of, of priorities that council is interested in, that we would want to get community feedback on as we, as we prepare the, the upcoming budget and then anything in between. So that would be really step one. And then depending on the council direction, at that point, we would then go out and do the community outreach to get the feedback in a, in a variety of different ways about whatever framework was laid out by the city council.
Thank you for the explanation. So I would, I, you know, this is my fourth year on council. I, I have, along with council member Hedges, have helped deliver on two ballot initiatives that are estimated to bring almost $6 million additional annual revenue to the city of San Mateo. Most recently, Measure CC, which passed by over 71%, and is estimated to bring $4.8 million to the city. And I, and so this was my council priority. And one of the things that for me was really important in, in making this suggestion was, was that I want, you know, I want the community to participate in, in decision-making about what our priorities are. And so what kept on happening over many years, over these last four years, is we would have unfunded mandates, we'd have unfunded priorities. And you know, the, and the drum that we would beat was, well, we could, we would if we could, but we can't because we don't have the money. And so I set about trying to change that by bringing, you know, Measure CC to fruition and bringing revenue that hadn't been seen in the city to, to the city. And during the council priority session, I had outlined several council priorities that for me are very important. And you know, understanding that Measure CC is a more volatile source of revenue. But also knowing, you know, being in this job for, you know, now my fourth year, looking at some of the unfunded initiatives and how they are prioritized. So one of the things that I did was I basically folded in, you know, five, let's see, one, two, three, four, five suggestions of priorities that I hear from the community. And what I would like to ask, and as I go through this, this list, I would like to ask that council use, use this list and also use your own ideas to combine during this next study session so that we as council members and representative, elected representatives of the community can, can talk about and reflect back what we're hearing and use that as sort of a way to frame some of the conversation and the input that we get from community members. So, and I think that that will be a really productive way to go to the community and also talk about what some of the trade-offs are. Like, we can't do everything, we can only do some things. So what does that look like, right? And so I think that it would be a very helpful way to streamline the process by framing out some of these priorities. And so some of the ones that I had listed in our conversation that were raised in, in the council priority session were infrastructure improvements and comprehensive circulation study of the designated equity priority community. That includes North Shoreview, North Central, and in our discussion actually expanded it to East of 101. It seemed like there was a strong, strong interest in, in doing a circulation study in our equity priority communities. Number two was increasing sustainability capacity, potentially through volunteer and staffing and partnerships, as well as DEI, the DEI Task Force Initiatives to increase council and commission compensation and to support recruitment of low-income and underrepresented communities. Number three is scale and expand on public safety and mental health programs by increasing staff capacity of the co-response PD and mental health pilot. Actually, there might be some dedicated funding that we're currently exploring that might take that off of the, the list. But I think these are the kind of examples of, of things that we could, you know, that we could specifically discuss. And if there are alternative ways to fund them, great. But, but these are definitely successful models that we want to build on. And lastly, convene and collaborate with business leaders. For example, the DSMA and Northeast Street Businesses and San Mateo Chamber of Commerce, SBA, to support local businesses and protect against the ADA lawsuits and improve disaster preparedness and post-pandemic recovery. So I restate these because, you know, because I folded them specifically into this, this priority. And I want to ask for, you know, council to support the, the process that would, that would put these ideas on the table for discussion as well as your ideas and, and have these as a basis for framing the study session conversation. Can I count to three?
Yeah, I support that nearly. Are you suggesting that we, in what part of the process are we adding those?
I think the idea, well, my understand, my ask is that when we're talking about this process, that we're clarifying that the process includes discussion of some of these ideas as well as the ideas that you bring, right? As well as the ideas that the community might bring, like that we, that we have a basis and a starting point with the ideas that I had presented in the council priority session.
I would be in favor. This is Rich Hedges. I would also like to add to that list because I think it affects the same communities you were discussing, the wage theft issue.
So I think the action for now is the concept of that not necessarily new ideas. So if there are three council members that are interested, that direction would then frame the initial study session where we would ask council to, to come with the ideas to, to develop the framework for a community budgeting process. So that would actually get us sort of a head start on the initial study session.
Which is great.
So is
Is there nodding heads? Great.
Okay, then I think we have the direction we need on that particular item.
Did you have a question, council member Lauren? Okay, wonderful. Any other, any other comments or questions? Then we will move on.
Comment.
Would you mind repeating yourself?
I said I was very much in favor of what you were talking about. I would like to add to the list you had, the wage theft issue, because it affects so many people in the communities you were talking about.
Okay, thank, thank you, council member Hedges. We will now open a public comment for this item. Do we have any members of the public who wish to make a comment about this item?
We're now requesting public comment for this item. I have one request to speak in chambers. If there's anyone else in the, in the room who would like to speak, please fill out a yellow speaker slip. If you are attending via Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature in Zoom. We'll give you a few moments to do that. I'm seeing no hands in Zoom, and I have one hand in the room. And that is Owen Day.
Nice audio setup. Good evening, members of council. My name's Owen Day. I would first
One moment, please.
I think we're three minutes.
Good evening, members of council. I would first like to commend you all and our city staff for working through the technical difficulties at the beginning of this meeting. It was inspiring to see everyone pitch in and work together to allow for public participation in our local government. And now, in regards to the topic I actually came up here to speak about, I want to discuss working for youth representation on our boards and commissions. I want to start by thanking Mayor Lee for her continued commitment to youth representation in local government through working with and listening to young people and advocating for policies that benefit them. The work that the council has done in passing the ordinance establishing two youth advisory seats on our Parks and Recreation Commission has been incredibly beneficial to this cause. While I am grateful for the work that has been done, it is important that we continue to strive for equitable representation on our boards and commissions. In my eyes, this could be through working to add youth advisory seats to the library board, the Community Relations Commission, the Sustainability and Infrastructure Commission, and the Planning Commission. All of these boards and commissions discuss issues that affect youth, and it's important that young people get to have a say about the policy that will influence their future. Please continue to work for the young people of San Mateo and allow them to have a say in the world that they are going to inherit. In addition to all that, I also would like to emphasize the priority, the importance of the priority that considers a charter amendment that works to provide San Mateo's, protects San Mateo's mayoral representation. Thanks for your time.
Thank you so much, Owen. And any other closing thoughts or comments from council? Yes, council member Lauren.
Thank you. I would just like to make a, a brief comment that we did receive a number of comments through email asking for stronger language on the bike pad priority number 32. And I just wanted to mention that I understand where, and, and thank for the, the community for those comments. Personally, I, I am comfortable with what's being laid out in the Blue Sky session. We had a brief discussion in which council member Hedges had an item and I had an item, and we, we've merged them. And during that discussion, the city manager noted that if we were to move forward on my priority, which had a specific date attached to it and so forth, we would likely end up taking a step with a, a study session similar to what was outlined in council member Hedges' proposal. And so I feel comfortable with the way it's currently worded in the agenda report. You know, we'll have that study session and that plots things out. We're considering things like Measure CC funding, as the mayor just outlined, street maintenance funding and more that could help inform this process. And I will be advocating for us to indeed complete those items. So thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. At this point, do we need to, do we need a motion or this is just a review and comment? Okay, do you have what you need? Okay. Thank you, Denise. Appreciate your work. Moving on to item number 20, pedestrian mall design contract amendment. We have a presentation from Kathy Kleimbauer, our assistant city manager. Welcome, Kathy.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the council. Thanks again for everybody's flexibility with tonight and our ever-changing arrangements. So I'm going to give a brief presentation tonight on the proposed amendment to the pedestrian mall design contract. But in addition to talking about this proposed amendment, I will also provide a brief overview of the current design as it stands for the pedestrian mall and also touch on some public comment we've received from the business community about the extent of the street closures. So as some brief background, we originally closed down sections of B Street way back in June 2020. It was intended to be a temporary street closure to help provide outdoor dining options to the businesses during the COVID-19 pandemic. It was so popular that in October of 2021, the city council took that temporary street closure and made it official. So we adopted an ordinance to officially close the streets under the state's pedestrian mall act, which is sort of just a formal public hearing process. Following that, in January of 2022, the city council approved a contract to design some preliminary short-term improvements for the pedestrian mall. And these short-term improvements were intended to replace the temporary waterfall barricades and provide some public amenities to the pedestrian mall spaces. We brought a initial design to the city council in July 2022, and the city council provided some comments on the proposed furnishings and the treatments that we then took back as staff to work on the, that was the preliminary design and to work on construction design. Next slide, please. Since July, though, we, as staff, have rethought some of the elements that we originally proposed to the city council. One of our primary concerns is to make sure that the pedestrian mall is safe for all the users. And the original traffic barricade options that were proposed did not provide an adequate level of crash protection in case there was an unfortunate accident on the pedestrian mall. I will say, as great a location as B Street is in terms of its location in the downtown, it's a very, very challenging street in terms of the infrastructure of B Street. And it has an unbelievable array of underground utilities that you wouldn't believe, which creates pretty intense complications for figuring out what types of barricades can actually work on that street. Another issue that staff has really been wrestling with is making sure that the business accessibility for their commercial loading needs is maintained. It's, you know, the businesses that are located there were never, their buildings weren't set up to be on a close street, and so they need deliveries to run their restaurants, their food, the, all the products that get delivered. We have noticed while we have our temporary barricades that has been really challenging for the businesses to be able to move them out of the way to allow the trucks to come in. And unfortunately, often don't get moved back after the trucks depart, which creates unsafe conditions. So we wanted to make sure that the business loading and accessibility was as simplified and easy as possible. Another aspect that has changed somewhat since our July presentation is making sure that there's adequate ADA parking stalls. So we had originally hoped to relocate the on-street parking stalls to the main street garage. But after consultation with our city's ADA consultants, we need to do those on-street. So we've identified a location off of Second, sort of in that half-block between the main street garage entrance and the pedestrian mall. But that will require creating new curb cuts, which just requires additional engineering and design. So that brings us to the contract amendment. We do need to amend the current design contract to add some additional services for the baller design. You need to do ground penetrating radar analysis for all the underground utilities, the ADA parking stall design. We're also looking at some higher-level traffic signal modifications to allow for loop detections for the trucks entering and exiting the pedestrian mall. So all of this adds up to a total amendment of roughly $96,000. We are asking for an appropriation to the CIP project of $130,000. Part of that is we did do an original amendment a while back to add some utility popholding. And by mistake, when we amended the contract, we didn't appropriate the funds for it at that time. So part of that extra money is that. And then we're also adding a small $14,000 contingency allowance. So I'm not here before council asking for money for a third amendment to the contract. Next slide, please. So just to give you a preview of what we're talking about for the barrier design, remember that we have significant underground utilities and we're trying to maintain business access. So in the center of the street where we have the emergency vehicle access lane where the commercial loading is, we're talking about having crash-rated automatic retractable ballards. And thank goodness, there's a sanitary sewer line that runs underneath and we're able to place the ballards just on either side and make the foundations work. But it was, it was tight. So that is what's proposed. So that is what's proposed. The exact mechanism of how we're going to make those like retract up and down for the businesses, we're still going to figure out. It could be like a remote control thing. It could be a little keypad that you enter. But I think the point is that we can sort of set a timer so that they're down for a certain amount of time and then go back up. So we don't have a situation where the street's left open. On outside of the emergency vehicle access lane, that's actually where the utilities are like really, really just all over the place. So we determined that really anything underground, anything that's crash-rated requires a foundation. Um, and anything underground in those locations is just not really going to work. So we have settled on these extremely heavy concrete bollards. We chose this rounded shaped design, as you can see from the picture, partially because we want to make sure that they're not used as benches. Because if you have sort of like a square concrete, it's pretty tempting to sit on it. And that's probably the last place where you want public seating is where you're trying to protect people from oncoming cars. So, um, that is the current barricade design for this project. Next slide, please. That is not the entirety of the project. There are other amenities that we are planning to include. The upper picture shows a mural. So the racial equity art project that's on the city council future plan will be located in the center, emergency vehicle access lane. That process is actually underway for the artist selection. They've put out an RFQ to the artist community. I think they're getting some proposals back. Um, that'll come before council sort of as a separate item with the actual design of that is. We're also looking at, um, public seating options. We're going to put in some tables and chair sets so that people can have food and enjoy it on the pedestrian mall without being a patron of one of the businesses on those blocks. So people can bring food from other businesses in the downtown. There'll be some bench seating areas, planters, bike racks. The yellow thing that you see are mid-block ADA ramps. So people in wheelchairs or with strollers don't have to only enter the box at the corners. They can enter mid-block to the pedestrian mall. In addition to what you see on this slide, there's also some things that are occurring off-site of the pedestrian malls. That includes the ADA parking spaces, adding commercial loading zones so that there's places for trucks to park and offload. So they don't always have to enter the pedestrian mall, especially during busy hours like dinnertime or for delivery pickup services. There's a need for additional signage. Um, so people know that the street's closed. Right now, all those signs aren't A-frames. And there's the traffic signal improvements. Next slide. So unfortunately, the use of automatic retractable bollards pretty significantly increases the project cost. So when we were originally talking about this project for the two-block area, we were hoping it would be a six hundred thousand dollar project. When you add in the automatic retractable bollards on the two blocks, it's four set of bollards. We're looking closer to one point two million dollars even for these short-term improvements. This is still, again, short-term, long-term. We really would love to see the streets completely redone and have the side box flushed with the street. Shaving down the crown, repaving everything. But that's a multimillion dollar project per block. And it's not something we're proposing to do at this point in time. The construction of what we are proposing could happen as soon as early twenty twenty-four. We just want to finalize the design in the next few months, put it out to bid or the contract, and we'd be ready to build. Next slide. So, um, recently, the city council has received a number of letters from businesses that are opposed to keeping the streets closed. Most of the letters have come from businesses on the block between First and Second Avenue. They have stated concerns that the street closures limit customer parking access, especially for food delivery service. So like the door dashes and the grub hubs. Those businesses also would prefer to have the option for parklets, which, you know, if you construct a platform, you can adjust for a lot of the street sloping issues. We don't allow those on the closed streets because it's not compatible to using the streets for public festivals. Once you start building platforms, then you really don't have the right of way needed to hold a festival. You can't do it only in the emergency vehicle access lane. So it's been a major trade-off of the pedestrian malls. All the improvements have to be temporary. We offer them to the businesses at a lower cost. They get more space most of the year, but they don't have the ability to to build out the same amenities you would in a parklet. Next slide. So this aren't the greatest photos. It's my best attempt to sort of show the comparison between the two streets. On B Street, between Second and Third Avenues, it's pretty heavily used by the businesses on that block. Almost every business, restaurant business, has an outdoor dining installation. On the block between First and Second, unfortunately, there's really only one business taking full advantage. And even that business has stated they'd love to have a parklet instead. So this is just something for consideration. And unfortunately, it has been this way pretty much since the start of the street closures. And we have seen a number of businesses turn over on both blocks. And even the businesses that have turned over and reopened on the block between First and Second have not chosen to install outdoor dining at this point in time. Next slide. So I'm before you tonight primarily to ask for approval of the design contract amendment and the additional appropriation necessary for the pedestrian mall project. But at this point in time, before we move forward and proceed with construction, because construction will be costly to do and then also costly to reverse. If the council wants to reconsider whether to keep the before pedestrian mall in place or want to reconsider any block or two, now would be the time to direct staff to come back at a later date and bring that, um, to you before we move forward and proceed with construction. Thank you. If there's any questions available.
Questions from council? Yes, please.
Thank you very much. And, and thank you very much for, to you and your team, because I know there has been so much work that's gone into this. Couple of questions. Number one, in terms of timing, could anything be done to just do some minor beautification before, if we said yes, let's go tonight? You're saying it would be early twenty twenty-four before this work really could start. And is there anything that could be done in the interim? Because what I hear from lots of people is that that would be really appreciated.
We have done our best to do some of the work. So you may notice, um, the street got slurry sealed or sort of repaved. And when we did that, we were able to remove the existing striping and, and put in the solid striping. We've taken out the parking meters and all the parking-related signage, which were quite a clutter on the street when you, and no longer needed. It is a little bit challenging to do much else on a partial basis. I mean, it may be possible to install the bike racks because those are ones that the city actually owns already. But it just is more costly for our public work staff to do things in pieces than to be able to bid it as one larger contract.
I think the, the specific questions I've received, which I'm sure you have in droves, so I totally acknowledge that is, number one, is there anything we can do even to have flowers on the bollards? I mean, the, the bollards themselves are, you know, they're, they're everything that we all know and they're very safe and that's great. Uh, and then number two, that the signage, is there anything that could be done to improve the attractiveness of the signage? I think those are the two big buckets.
I think we can look at some minor things like that. And I will say that the, the hope is that the racial equity art project could be painted as soon as like midsummer. And so that project, you know, we haven't figured out exactly what that is. It could just be one artist on one block or it could be both blocks. All that sort of maybe depends on the outcome of discussions tonight. But that would be a very immediate and, and impactful improvement.
Okay. Great. And then just one last question related to the, the businesses on First and Second. Is there, has there been any discussion about what we could do to try and particularly help those businesses? Because I know when there is a festival, you know, they're even further disadvantaged because everything's sort of set up down there. But, um, whether there's additional thought that can be given to try and promoting them or doing something during festivals so that you know, they can try and get a little more excited about being part of them all. Have you heard anything from the businesses themselves?
I mean, we've encouraged them to use the outdoor spaces. The, um, the fee is like three hundred seventy dollars a year to be able to use the space. So it's very low. When we do have the festivals, we, we are always very careful to not bring in outside food. So, you know, when we have the September nights on B Festival, the whole theme of the festival is we put out tables and encourage everybody to go by from the local businesses and the ones on that block where the festival is held traditionally get the most foot traffic. I'm not sure. I mean, I'm sure there's other things that can be done. I don't, um, we haven't yet figured out what they are. Councilmember Lorraine.
Thank you. If we, if we were to discuss further the idea of revisiting, um, the status of First to Second pedestrian mall, could we conduct an updated survey or outreach to all the businesses in between? I, I, I get the sense that we've, we've received some, uh, comments proactively from some businesses, but, um, maybe not. We haven't really heard from them all. I'm just wondering.
Absolutely. I mean, I definitely wouldn't, would not be asking the council to make any such decision tonight. And we can certainly talk about what more you would want to make that decision. So yeah, we, we absolutely could do that.
Thank you. Those are my questions.
Councilmember Hedges.
Yeah, I actually have some. Can you hear me?
Wait one second.
Can everyone hear me?
Yes, please restart.
Okay, so I have some fairly strong opinions. I've actually reached out to a representative of the Downtown Association. I've walked the area on several occasions. And quite frankly, I'll just be very open. I can't vote for this tonight. My personal opinion, after discussing it, is that we should reopen between First and, uh, and Second. And I think there's several reasons for that. Not only the businesses, but we haven't seen the full impact of the increased, uh, motor traffic from the Essex Building at the Old Trags location. As the Caltrain ridership improves, and we hope it does, it's really not an easy flow to get out of there if you have that section closed or to get in. So as you're well aware, coming out of the Caltrain station, you have to come out and either turn left or go straight ahead to El Camino. So, uh, it really affects people going east. So, uh, based on the way the businesses feel, based on the, the additional costs that we've, we've, we've seen and based on where those additional costs, being able to focus the money between Second and Third, I think it's a good idea to, to rethink doing First and Second. We can actually allow them to have parklets that are easily removed. If we have, uh, events there and put in temporary barriers, uh, if that's our desire, but I see no good cause for continuing to blockade between First and Second. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Councilmember Hedges. Does anyone in the council have any additional questions before we go to comments and public comments?
Comments and some questions. So my questions.
Excellent.
Sort of put it in context, last night I walked, uh, all the restaurants between First and Second. Uh, the only one that was not open was Fogbird and I got pretty much the same feedback that we're hearing. And that's more comments. We'll come back to that. Uh, but one of the, some of the questions that I did get from them, which I was, I told them I would bring to the, the table is, they're looking for the ability to have, uh, Lyft and Uber ride share taxi stands somewhere at the ends of each street. And also asking if they could have a similar like five-minute or 10-minute parking for, uh, food services. So like the, the company, delivery services have somewhere that they can pull in, they can walk down to a stand and hand off the food and then then be on their way. Have we looked at that already? Is that something that's in the works?
Yeah. So as part, as part of the pedestrian mall plan that's currently designed, we are adding loading zones in either direction at every intersection for Second and Third. So those loading zones could serve both for trucks, but also for the door dash drivers to short-term park when they pick up food from the businesses. So they would be located, you know, pretty much, no business will be more than half a block away from, from one in either direction.
Yeah, that's all the questions I have for now. Thank you.
I, I do want to add an, I don't know if I made it clear, but I would still, regardless of how you feel about between First and Second, I would recommend completing the design and it'd be very easy to sort of bifurcate the design and move forward with just half of it. But I don't think the design would be that much cheaper at this point to do just one block as opposed to two. A lot of the elements are sort of in place and the pieces still just need to be finalized.
More questions?
Yes.
What, so there's four bollards, two, you know, two and two on the end of each street. So we're looking at eight total bollards that are hydraulic. That, that's the highest or the, one of the most expensive things. So if we have to, that, that would be a.
It would, it would definitely have the construction costs, but I'm saying the design costs.
Got it. Okay. Thank you.
Because you're just sort of replicating that. So thank you for, um, clarifying about how we could move forward and bifurcate the decision point. That was my question. Now we can open it up to public comment. Do we have?
For the mayor, it looks like, uh, Councilmember Hedges wishes to speak. Councilmember Hedges, do you have further questions?
No, I do not. I didn't know you could see my hand. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you. Can we get a count on the number of public commenters?
Yes, we are at the moment for public comment for this item. If you wish to speak on this item and you are attending via Zoom, please raise your hand. If you are attending in person, please complete a yellow speaker slip. I also, for members in person, please be advised, we have to accommodate the unique circumstances of this room. We have opened another conference room, which is also displaying the council meeting. And, uh, we will be accepting public comments for individuals who are attending via conference room A. Staff are supporting, assisting, directing, public commenters to conference room C to provide their public comments. So we will provide some additional time for people to travel here. At this time, we have two in-person public speaking comments. And we have three in Zoom. And I look to council to, uh, set direction on the time that we would like to establish for this item.
It's a total of five, so that's three minutes each. Are we comfortable with three minutes? Okay.
Perfect. The first speaker I will call is Lisa Kioa, followed by Kevin Simpson. If you could please form a line directly next to our speaker podium. Thank you.
I, um, as far as the plan that you've brought forward, I'm just kind of concerned that it seems like it's moving forward without much looking into it. Like we, like we were with the North Central Bike Lanes. We were not aware of anything until the last minute. So, but, but I wanted to add comment as far as you're talking about those big concrete baller that you want to use as a block for, for the entrances or whatever on that avenues. I'm, I'm thinking more along the line of what she had asked of maybe using a big planter, concrete planter with some planting on top instead of having a big, do you know what I'm saying? A, a, a block with a concrete planter on top that you can plant some nice plants instead of having a concrete ball sitting in the middle of the street. Just a suggestion, because she wanted to know something about them. And also I think my concern is, I mean, I've seen it every day as I drive through. And I, I like the fact that people are walking through there all the time. I'm just wondering about how other businesses on the cross streets would feel. I mean, this is going to be a big benefit for those on, only on that specific area. But how about the ones cross street like on Third, Second, but and not on B Street. That's just my comment.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Kevin Simpson.
Hello, I'm Kevin Simpson. I live close to downtown and I'm downtown every day. And I moved to San Mateo fifteen years ago. And, um, one of the first And one of the first things that I observed was the B Street corridor seemed like an ideal place to have a pedestrian mall. And we live in a place that has terrific weather most of the year, this year excluded. And we live in a place where people could really enjoy outdoor dining, being together. Our downtown was a big draw. It's the reason that my husband and I decided to move to San Mateo when we uprooted ourselves 15 years ago. And I hate to see us squander an opportunity to establish something really different. I don't think there's a pedestrian mall anywhere in this part of the country. And I would like to see us keep the momentum and continue on with this project. I think the glaring elephant in the room in terms of what happened to the momentum of the downtown dining scene was this false trade off between having festivals and therefore needing to take down parklets. I'd like to see the parklets come back. I'd like to see us gradually see the representation of restaurants concentrate on B Street, which would give us a lively anchor to the rest of downtown. I'd like to keep at least two blocks of a pedestrian mall. I don't know if it needs to be between fourth and third or and second and third, or keep the block between first and second. But I don't think that festivals are necessarily what we want to sacrifice a very lively downtown streetscape for. I think if you change that aspect of it, let those businesses put the parklets back up, which were extremely pop popular, and I'm sure drove a lot of businesses for those restaurants. Then we could have a really great pedestrian mall. I really don't care about those festivals. They feel like a, a solution looking for a problem. We come up with a theme, we have a festival, and I don't think it really does anything for the long term attractiveness of our downtown. So that's where I'd like to see us make some changes to this project. I urge you to keep up the momentum. Let's get this darn thing done. And let's, let's revive our downtown, which is in a lot of trouble for the first time in the 15 years that I've been here. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, moving to our Zoom speakers, will be moving to Sean Laskin. Sean, please unmute your mic.
Good evening, City Council. Just wanted to begin by voicing my support for continuing to keep the pedestrian mall. I personally, I also live near downtown as previous comments commentators have also stated, I also don't own a vehicle. So I do spend a lot of time walking through downtown. I was even just there last Sunday to grab some desserts. And even, you know, we were talking about from the presentation the section between first and second, not having a lot of parklets. I think I was there Sunday or Saturday night at 10:00 PM. And, you know, there were still a lot of folks out there, regardless of whether or not there were, there were parklets. So I think even just having that space within our downtown provides a safe place for pedestrians to stand around, have that space, you know, to spread out without cutting the sidewalks alongside some of their favorite businesses. So I think keeping the pedestrian mall with the, at least with the current two block setup provides, you know, better access for folks who aren't using cars to move around or through our downtown. Additionally, I also just wanted to echo some previous comments about, you know, neighboring businesses and their parklet programs. I know that the, the parklet program has definitely seen some, you know, a lack of use ever since we've switched over to the new permanent program. I, I would love to see if the city can dedicate a resource to reaching out to businesses to better educate them on how to set up their parklets, at least anecdotally, some of the new businesses between first and second aren't aware that we do have a, you know, flexible parklet program for for people who are on B Street. Even if, if it's something along the lines of can the city provide temporary loan or revenue sharing program that can help offset the immediate capital costs of investing in a parklet, knowing that you know, the, the costs of setting up a parklet on B Street versus one of the neighboring streets is much higher when you have to set up that permanent structure. But overall, I just wanted to just say that I love the current direction the design is going in to see that we're going to put in bike racks and benches. I think that beautification of B Street will eventually help encourage businesses to set up their, their parklets to mirror the sorts of designs and setups we've seen in neighboring cities like Sunnyvale and Mountain View. And it will really help to create that amenity, additional amenity that I think our city can use to really showcase the strengths of our restaurant and eating scene that is really unique, I think, to, you know, in comparison to a lot of peninsula cities. And I'll just use the rest of my time to voice support for maybe moving those festivals to.
Thank you so much, sir. Your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you. We are now moving on to our next speaker, Max Motner. Max, please unmute your mic.
Hey there, can y'all hear me?
Yes, we can.
Amazing. I'm actually sitting on B Street at the moment at the Phil's, looking at some of the businesses that are operating, looking at some of the foot traffic. My wife's here as well. We've been talking about this as you have thinking about what the future of these two blocks could look like. And like previous commenters, I mean, I get the comments and feedback that specific individual restaurants have given about their preferences for the block. But I, I think a common thread of residents is that there's generally majority positive support for pedestrianizing both blocks. I think a good question to ask or to think about is why one block is succeeding or the other is failing. And I think like other commenters, it has a lot to do with the forced inflexibility of the parklet program. And like other commenters, I agree that I've been to the summer events, my wife and I have both been, and I think they could be relocate relocated at a park and allow for more vibrant and more permanent parklet setup on the second block. And yeah, just generally want to voice support for approving the budget that Kathy's asking for and making a really desirable and permanent downtown, something that I think Burlingame failed to do with their non pedestrianized downtown, which is sort of a cluster. And I very much appreciate how quiet it is here on the second block of B Street that we're sitting on sharing public comment from. And I'll leave it at that. Thanks for the allowance.
Thank you. We'll, we'll now move on to David Hunt. David, please unmute your mic.
Hello, good evening. Wanted to start with, I believe Baldwin was the original proposal for the pedestrian mall. So I think our current implementation is already a compromise. And it'd be interesting to survey those businesses on Baldwin and see if they would be interested in extending the mall if we're revisiting this topic. And just to agree with the previous three commenters, I think it'd be amazing to allow parklets on the current two closed blocks of B Street. It's especially the Blue Bottle Parklet. And there were some really amazing ones there that, that we've lost since we moved forward with the current set of rules. And it would be, I think, helpful to the businesses to revisit that and have that flexibility. Explore possibly, you know, the idea that's been thrown out there of these events being in other locations. And then I think I'll just end with a thought of, we kind of get what we designed for. If we open up, you know, this block that's being considered, we're going to get more traffic, more pollution, more cars. I think there's a great opportunity here to have something exciting and new in downtown San Mateo that could be a huge asset we invest in it. And because of that, I think we should approve this budget, move forward with the design and keep investing in this space. Thanks.
Thank you. We will now move on to Daniel Shore. Daniel, please unmute your mic.
Yes, hi, this is Daniel Shore. And I am, I wasn't going to comment on this item particularly, I came for another one. But this particular item is of great interest, I think, to the community and to me. I think downtown is a resource that we need to be very thoughtful about. The aesthetics of the blocks in question need to be improved. They need to be inviting. They need to help attract people to those businesses, especially on the block that right now is suffering a bit. I, I'm not terribly impressed with the aesthetics of the design that's proposed. I think the barriers need some work. I think there needs to be a little more landscaping. I think it just needs to be beautified and inviting for people to really want to be there. I think the idea of a pedestrian mall is fantastic. And if it's not done right, I think it could be a real problem. Especially for that block that needs help. So please be thoughtful about it. Parklets are absolutely critical for those businesses to survive. People want to eat out. People want to eat out in a comfortable parklet and the heaters and so forth. So, you know, you're trying to accomplish a lot of things here. You're trying to accomplish festivals. You're trying to accomplish people eating outside. I, I think you need to pick one and make it a priority. And I think the parklets need to be a priority. So the festivals can be relocated or they can be, they can accommodate to the environment, not the other way around. But I think you need to, you need to focus on the beautification and the parklets and make, make it an inviting pedestrian mall. Doesn't have to be expensive. But definitely those concrete barriers need help. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no further. We just have an additional hand has been raised. Would you like to take this comment? Ariel, please raise your, please unmute your mic.
Thank you, everyone. I just wanted to lend my support in investing in a pedestrian mall, whatever it takes. A lot of comments have been made already, but I think pedestrian focused downtown makes it more equitable. People who rely on public transit, community members who live close by that don't want to drive five minutes. People who walk into the neighborhood, it just makes it more open and more importantly, more safe. So just adding to everyone that's already made a comment, just wanted to lend my support. Thank you.
Thank you. There are no further public comment.
Thank you so much for everyone's thoughtful comments on this. I am bringing it back to council for additional thoughts and comments. Anyone like to start us off? Sure, Councilmember Lauren.
Thank you. I'll just start by saying I am in support of approving the design appropriations in full, regardless of any other decisions we make. And I appreciate the, the public comments we've heard tonight. I'm, I'm okay with bringing this back to council to discuss further related to, you know, considering whether to bifurcate this. But at the moment, personally, I'm inclined to agree with a lot of what we've heard from public comments tonight. Firstly, I think, I think if we do go ahead with that and depending on other council comments, I would want to ask that staff, please look into asking the, the businesses in sort of a more structured way. Making sure that we get input from each of them and potentially I would think sharing something like the presentation we saw tonight to give them a sense. I remember seeing a particular note in the, in the report from a business that that seemed to be asking, you know, for updates on the plan. And to me, I think, you know, we received some tonight. And so if that person hasn't received it yet, that might be good to, to reinforce that there's more coming. I, I think personally, I would hate to lose the second block. And, and I think for, to me, I guess I'm curious, I don't mean to turn this into a question, but I feel like I'd like to try if that's okay. Kathy, you know, we heard a number of comments about, you know, there, there does seem to be a bit of tension between the, the changes we made to parklet policy on, on the pedestrian mall for festivals. You know, I guess, could you maybe give your take on, you know, whether there's whether, whether this is, you know, the, the only way we could do it or maybe even like your thoughts on why one block seems to be implementing a sort of temporary parklet system over the other one and.
I mean, so this is, this is a tricky trade off, right? So if we were to, so we allow parklets everywhere else in the downtown. And it's true that we've only had a handful that have been built since we sort of left the pandemic era and we've put more stringent requirements on making sure they're ADA accessible and built to certain structural standards and charging fees per parking space. If we were to do that same thing on the pedestrian malls and people were to build out those parklets. If, for example, the block between second and third, where almost every business is using the outdoor space, then there is no space left in the public right of way. The emergency vehicle access lane is not enough per like fire code standards to allow there to be a public festival. I mean, you could certainly have like, you can always put a stage on one end and only people that are patrons of those businesses and paying to sit in those businesses seating areas could be part of the festival or the businesses could donate their areas for the night. But unless those areas are removed, you cannot use those streets for a festival. It was the prior councils priority to enhance the number of downtown festivals that are being held. They really wanted to see previous feedback given to staff was that events held in Central Parks tended to keep crowds in Central Park and didn't necessarily provide that sort of economic spillover into the downtown. So having festivals directly in the downtown was something that they were strongly encouraging staff to not only encourage others to do, but actually throw ourselves. You certainly can always close a different block for a festival, but once you have like a block that's pretty much filled with parklets, it's not possible to hold a public festival in that street. So you're taking a street and you're allowing, you're essentially creating sort of private use of the street, other than the expanded walkway through the center of the street, which if that's this council's priority or prerogative, certainly possible to do, not a problem at all. It's just a trade off. It's an inherent trade off. If I may, there was a comment, this lovely woman in the back made about how much nicer it would be to have planters instead of those round concrete ballards. We have looked extensively at that. The heaviest planter is just nowhere near the level of crash protectiveness. It's like 600 pounds versus a 3,000 pound concrete ballard. So it, it's just not as safe a treatment. So it's constant trade offs, isn't it? I mean, it's aesthetics versus safety. I just wanted to add that. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll, I'll try to wrap up my comments by saying I appreciate that extra commentary and I, I guess, well, actually, I feel like my comments are probably pretty well wrapped up. I'm okay with bringing this back, but I, yeah, those are my comments.
Who else would like to go?
Number one, thank you. And thank you to everybody who made public comment because this is, this is something we want the community to love. And I apologize that I don't have the historical information that Mayor Lee or all of you do. But when this was being discussed prior, it was, was, I'm sure there was discussion about the other blocks before it was centered on second and third and first and second. It would be helpful to understand why the decision was made as it was.
Sure, I'd be happy to provide that context. So originally, we also included a partial block closure on the street between Baldwin and First Avenue. So at the time, the businesses that are on the Donut Delight side of the street, there's a driveway there that served and those businesses are now closed that that driveway served. But the, there were businesses along that driveway and a parking area that belonged to those businesses. And they were adamant that they needed their access maintained in order to stay in business. So we did just half a maintained in order to stay in business. So we did just half a block closure. So it that ended up sort of being just a entirely privatized use of that space. So it was used entirely for outdoor dining without additional pedestrian sort of walkway. That didn't work out very well, having only one lane open because cars were driving. It was one way, but cars were driving both ways. Everybody saw that happen one time or another. It was quite a dangerous situation. So that block was really challenging because of that driveway access needed. That may not be the case anymore. Now that that box going to be redeveloped and those businesses are closed. But it sort of would depend on the future use and what's being planned. The block between third and fourth is very challenging because there's a public parking garage access driveway mid block. And then the largest business uses on that block on the opposite side of the street are the furniture store and a yoga studio. So there probably would be less intensive use of that street as well.
And your comments beg a question that has there been discussion with the developers of Essex? X-Trags as too, because they had some concepts about how to use some public, their space for public space and combining it with the other area. And I'm thinking there might be an opportunity to go back and revisit, as you're saying.
We certainly could revisit with them. I know one of the things that they're planning and hoping for are expanded sidewalks in that area. I I don't have their, you know, formal statement on the record of how they feel about closing the the street permanently.
Okay. Comments would be, I also would approve, would support approving the the budget appropriation this evening. But I think I would also really ask, how can we go back and talk about beautification? Totally hear your comments about the bollards and safety is obviously number one, two, and three. But is there anything you can do to the tops of the bollards or around the bar? Just I don't want to design for you, but I think a lot of the comments I have received from the public are, we adore this space. We want more of it. But it's got to have that feeling that we wanted to have.
So there are other improvements that are included that I did have a slide showed earlier. So I didn't, I didn't show it in design layout, but there will be flowering planters placed throughout. There are especially around us, there will be public seating areas with benches and tables and chairs and the flowering planters will be around those, those that yellow ADA ramp that I showed will be lined on other side by flowering planters. So there there will be other beautification. There'll be the paint in the middle of the street, the mural in the middle of the street, the bike racks. So it it's not the totality of just bollards. There's more to the plan than 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 that one barricade. And I wish we could use planters as the barricades again. They're just much less safe. And if a planter gets hit, you can imagine the explosion of soil and things that would fly.
Okay. And then the last comment, just to think about usage. I've heard from a number of the businesses on B Street that as it gets later at night, some businesses put out their garbage cans and other businesses are still very much open and trying to promote outdoor usability. So if there's anything that can be done, I know that's a conflict, but just I I received a lot of comment from that.
That is a structural challenge to the fact that, you know, there there aren't back alleys to the street. And so that is the only location for the trash cans to be out. And so that is sort of just a infrastructure related challenge to the the street itself. I'm not sure that there is a solution unless those other businesses would be willing to after hours move their neighbors' trash cans out when they've closed. Those type of like relationships could be formed.
Long time ago, I lived in Europe for two years and one of the things I loved most about living in Europe was these kind of common open spaces. I mean, every, every little city in town has a beautiful open square and their weather is nowhere near as good as ours. I mean, there's tons of times of the year where you're sitting outside and there's heat lamps and plastic barricades up and it's it's freezing. And yet people still get outdoors. And I I think I don't want to come across as, you know, anti that. I I love having a, you know, big section of swath of B Street closed. The only concern that I have is I don't want to, you know, build it and then have no, you know, no restaurants stick around. And so, you know, I I walked the neighborhood and I literally talked to every restaurant except for Fogbird last night, either a manager and assistant manager, and I couldn't find a single one who wants that their street closed. And so, you know, it it leaves me with a okay, like, how do we get them on board and how do we get them to be happy? And so, you know, I I don't I don't want us to push forward with something that, you know, that we're not going to get buy in and we're not going to get restaurants. They they've already had restaurants on that on the between first and second close and then be replaced and then close again. And so, you know, I I just want us to be real sensitive to the fact that I am not the Grinch. I I would love to have I'd love to have all of downtown be pedestrian mall, but but I also want to make sure that we're finding, you know, we're we're working through it with the businesses so that they're going to sustain and be there and 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 be happy with the with the situation. So, you know, that's that's my only reservation. I I would push forward for tonight for, you know, approving the budget to complete the designs. And then I would just ask that we revisit and and do a real deep dive outreach to the people, particularly between first and second. And then obviously, you know, maybe there are things that we can look at from other parts, other, you know, European cities and and try to figure out how we can make it more enticing for them and more successful for them. Because like I said, at the end of the day, I I don't want to have an empty street and I I can't share with you the photo, but I I was there and I took a photo at seven o'clock last night. And between first and second, it was, it was a ghost town. It's all neon lights on either side and not a single soul standing there at seven o'clock on a Sunday night. And so like I said, I that doesn't mean that I don't want it. I I really would like us to have a vibrant downtown outdoor mall where people can eat and gather and and, you know, and I've I've lived it and I know how great it is. But I just need, I think we need to do more work to uh to make make it successful. That's all I have.
Well, I I I've been on this journey from, you know, from day one at the beginning of the pandemic when we were doing the slow streets and you know, people at the time didn't know if you were going to get sick if you were within six feet of somebody, right? And so there was a very real health crisis that spurred us into action and and the the desire of the community was to create a, you know, a safe outdoor space for people to enjoy and to keep businesses alive and to to promote a connected community when we were all in deep isolation and and literally afraid to interact with one another in close proximity. So that's, you know, I think important context to put on how how we got to where we are. You know, my, you know, my participation in this process has always been with a very strong desire to create a to give the streets back to pedestrians. And and to activate the space through programming, through city, city kind of programming. I think that, you know, there are, you know, the vision of that, I think, is is something that we can still and should be still striving towards. As we have done deeper analysis, looking at the, you know, the infrastructure constraints, just in terms of what is underground, you know, or you know, what we are looking at in terms of the crown of the street being in some cases so peaked that it's above the the actual sidewalk, right? And we've all, you know, patroned these restaurants literally at forty degree slopes where our drinks are sliding off the table, right? And it's not good for a business. It's not good for a comfortable dining experience. Let's be real. And and it's been really, for me, very, I feel very deeply conflicted about about the about the plan, that the disconnect between the where we are and the vision and how it's been implemented. And I don't think it's the fault of the city. It's looking, you know, the there are constraints that have revealed themselves along the way that we couldn't have known if we hadn't started down this path. Right? And so, you know, I think that we're at a point now where we need to look at, you know, look with much more information, community, you know, more more systematized community outreach to businesses. I think, you know, Mr. Simpson Simpson made a very important point about a false trade off that that we have, that we have, I think, are responsible for conceiving of, that we can lift this weight of the idea that it's parklets or festivals. I mean, I've talked to other municipalities that have have come up with alternative solutions that include global use agreements, right? Where you can create a, you can create a a parklet with an understanding that in certain times of the year that this street will be returned to, you know, the the community. And then we're not paying for moving furniture off the street and storing it for three days out of the year or, you know, ten days out of the year. And that's not to say that open streets aren't a benefit. I'm literally in a conversation right now with with the LGBTQ Commission and the Pride, the Pride Celebration, the Pride Initiative. Because they're, they want to bring the first Pride Parade to the peninsula and do it in San Mateo. And the only way that that would be feasible is because we actually have a closed street. So, you know, I I I in no way undervalue the the benefits that that can come from activating space when it actually is, you know, available and open. However, I think that, you know, one off festivals, as important as they are, do not, for me, do not work for the 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 daily trade off and restrictiveness that has become, you know, the reality of our parklet program or the limitation of not being able to have a parklet program on our closed pedestrian streets. So I think that that is actually created somewhat of a false or an a a stringent constraint that that we as policymakers can talk about lifting, right? So I, you know, I think that there's consensus across the board that, you know, we want to see this move forward, but we know that there are components here that are definitely not working that need to be reworked. And so I I would strongly support bringing this back for further discussion. And and I think, you know, while we heard from a lot of residents, I, you know, and we did not hear from businesses that were in the room represented, I think that that's an important part of of their of us, our council, being really fully informed from the business perspective, because downtown is the crown jewel. And if we're not, you know, you know, we, if we want to have a downtown, you know, that feels like the, you know, feels like the kind of like community vitality and the economic vitality that we know to be something that's so precious to us and our small business owners, like they need to be in business. And right now, the way that I think that it's being implemented is actually a hindrance to to their their viability of their businesses. And that is clear, that is, that is contrary to our goals. So I I want, you know, to be really clear in articulating that there are a lot of things that we know we need to work on and I it sounds like there's a strong commitment in the council, across the council to do that.
Councilmember Hedges.
Oh, councilmember Hedges. Well, he already gave his comments. Okay, councilmember Hedges, do you have additional comments to make?
Yeah, I've listened to public comment. I do have additional comments. So I'm very much with many of the folks. I think at least over half of spoke about parklets versus versus festivals. And quite frankly, for me, parklets win. The festivals occur, I think, sort of randomly now, when we decide that there's something we want to do. And I think it would be much more good for downtown if we found an alternative site for the festivals like one of the individuals mentioned. I know that part of the festival idea was to bring business into downtown. But the parklets and the closed space between second and and third on B Street seem to be doing that. However, the space between first and second, I have to agree with councilmember Newsom. Quite frankly, it doesn't do any good to have have a place closed off to vehicles if there are no businesses to visit. And I think we're really in danger along there, as many of the businesses have said, of causing irreparable harm to them. So I would just like to say that I actually traveled to to Denver, Colorado, when they opened up their light rail to ride it, check it out. And I was really happy to see that the whole downtown strip was closed to automobiles. And they actually had electric buses that traveled and stopped at each stop every five minutes that transported people. I was there at Thanksgiving and people were out in Denver. I'm a California boy. Sitting there having coffee and meals and it was cold. So they do draw people. They, people loved it, but this isn't Denver. It's not a strip between two train stations. And I think we need to look very closely at what we do between first and I've already partially made up my mind, partially with talking to some of the businesses downtown and and at least one representative from the from the Downtown Association. And so I think it would be a bad idea to complete this between first and and second and then not have places for people to go to. If there's not places to travel to, people won't be walking there. So I really, I'm nervous about going ahead with the budget, thinking that somehow we won't revisit this if time doesn't permit. So I'm going to reluctantly go along with you on this, but I really need to emphasize that we bring this back to make a decision between first and second street.
Can I, I think you raised a good question. Can I ask what would a bifurcation structure look like in terms of how you know, the it sounds like a lot of us have reservations about implementation on on B between first and second, but everyone, I think there's strong consensus supports moving forward with the with the design and implementation between second and third. So so is that, is that a poss- a possible decision point for tonight?
I, again, I would recommend just for the design, it's it's like ninety percent done, even though it does look like a big extra amount. Just to have the design completed, I mean, especially for the automatic retractable bollards, it's kind of like a cut and paste for the foundation design between the blocks. But we can make sure that the construction documents are set so that they can be bid like block by block, so that we don't need to move forward. And we can have this full, robust conversation about, you know, moving forward with that block between first and second for construction. In addition, I can also come back and we can address some of the more policy related issues that affect both blocks. Like the, you know, current prohibition on permanent structures in order to allow for removal for festivals or things like that. So we can have all those conversations and I don't think that those necessarily would impact the even on second and third, the the design that's currently planned.
I have one more question.
Councilmember Hedges.
Yeah, Kathy, thank you. I'm curious as to an approximate amount of the money that we would save by reducing the four bollards between first and and second.
It it's pretty extensive, I would say. I mean, it's not exactly half, but I would say you're probably, because some of the improvements are off site. But you're probably going from one point two to like 700,000 budget, so closer to the original budget allocation.
Okay, that's
Just one block.
That's what I thought, but I just wanted to confirm it. Thank you.
Okay, another question from councilmember Newsom.
So if they move forward as we're planning and a restaurant puts out chairs and tables on the square, does the liability then revert to the city? Or if you are a restaurant and you have chairs, maybe this is a question for persona, you have, if you have chairs and and tables in front on on the public street, is the liability if someone in a wheelchair falls over, is that, is that getting pushed to the city? Or do do the people that are putting out the tables and chairs assume that liability?
Well, maybe we have an encryption permit process where, you know, they assume liability for all the for the parklets, for the facilities they put in the right of way. So it would be on the the tenant, really, at that business. We also encourage the property owner to sign on to that arrangement as well, but it's really putting the burden more on the on the business itself.
Yeah, I mean, one of the pushbacks that I'd also heard yesterday was, you know, that even though they currently can't have their their parklets because they're not, they're allowed to right now on that street, what they were saying was What they were saying was, if they did, there's an ADA compliance liability that a lot of them don't, don't want to, you know, put themselves at risk for.
It, it is possible to, to build the parklets to be ADA compliant, so you may have, in, because of the crown of the street, which is a common situation throughout the downtown, we're really lucky in San Mateo that we have such slope streets. You may notice that some of the parklets that are built are actually, like in most cities, the idea of a parklet is to be flush with the sidewalk. But our parklets are actually, tend to have to be raised above the sidewalk, and people ramp up onto the parklet, because the crown of the street is, the mayor mentioned, is actually higher than the sidewalk itself, so.
But our design guidelines are, are require ADA accessibility.
Right.
Right. Did you have a question?
Yes, thank you. You know, one other thing that I would, I would want to say, just in response to everyone who talks about festivals, right before COVID hit and everything shut down, I was part of a committee that Jennifer Chen was heading up, and I believe you were part of it as well, and a number of other people, to look at how do we create festival, a festival strategy and program? So it isn't a one-off here and a one-off there, but something that, yeah, but, but the strategy was to create excitement for being downtown and being in San Mateo. And I'm really excited in not, not to lose that. And if we go back, you know, and you continue with the design, but we start to deal with some of these questions along the way, I would like that to be part of it, because if you think about it, next year, we're going to complete our general plan, we're going to be reopening to the world. This is a great year to say, we're, we're back, San Mateo is here, and, and going forward. So I would love us to think about the festival and other activity strategy, and not just think about where we are one-off, which we could do while, you know, in parallel with what you're doing with the design.
Okay, so staff is asking of us to adopt a resolution to approve a supplemental budget appropriation of $130,766, $130,766 from the Anasign Fund Balance of the General Fund to the Pedestrian Mall Design Project to cover the cost of the First and Second Amendments to the Agreement with Community Design Plus Architecture, and the Contingency Reserve approved the Second Amendment to the Agreement with Community Design Plus Architecture to increase the contract amount to a total not to exceed $262,251 for additional design work and engineering support services, establish a contingency reserve of $14,000, and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement in substantially the form presented in approved amendments within the contingency amount. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
W. Clark, would you please call roll?
With pleasure, Mayor. Councilmember Lorraine?
Yes.
Councilmember Newsom?
Yes.
Councilmember Hedges?
With the understanding that this will come back to us for first and second street. For first and second street, I vote yes, otherwise I'm not voting yes.
That's, that is the understanding, yes.
Deputy Mayor Diaz Nash?
Yes.
And Mayor Lee?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Okay, it is, I know we have a lot of my neighbors in the room. I want to do a bio check. Are we, do we need a break?
Through the, through the mayor, we also need to do some resetting of the room for Conference Room A. We have some additional attendees who arrived, and we want to try to make that space as comfortable as possible for those people.
10 minutes?
10 minutes would be perfect.
Okay, let's break for 10 minutes.
It's like, I have my computer open, it's like, it can see your screen right now. You see, no, you see it? No, just yours. How is that? I see you talking about you seeing the logos on the front of my computer, she goes, no, I can see your screen. I was sitting here like. Laptop is one.
All right, thank you, everyone, for your patience. We are still in Conference Room C with lots of company here. We are moving on to item number 21, that's stormwater funding overview. We have a presentation by our Regulatory Compliance Manager in the Engineering Division of Public Works, Sarah Scheit.
Good job. Yes.
I got it, okay.
Hello. Well. Wait. Testing, testing. Okay. Thank you, Mayor Lee and councilmembers. My name is Sarah Scheit, pretty good pronunciation there. I am the Regulatory Compliance Manager with the Public Works Division, City of San Mateo. I also have Jerry Bradshaw and Chris Coulter, our consultants with SCI Consulting Group, online to join us. Quick overview of our presentation today. I'm going to go over our project purpose and a little bit of the history. Quick overview of our stormwater system and the funding analysis that we've completed, along with the funding survey that has been completed. And then we'll bring you up to speed on where we are with current status and next steps. When stormwater is managed effectively, it's channeled away from developed areas and safely into waterways or storage facilities, reducing the risk of flooding. Our community's stormwater infrastructure is extensive, but it is aged and needs upgrades to become a safe and reliable resource for the community in the years ahead. Current storms remind us of the need for dedicated resources to repair and update aging infrastructure, so that residents and businesses can be better protected from flooding. We currently do not have a dedicated funding source for managing stormwater. Properly managed stormwater systems protect the health and well-being of local residents, wildlife, and habitats by reducing pollution and trash in local waterways and in San Francisco Bay. Obtaining funder for, funding for stormwater infrastructure aligns with the city council's strategic initiatives. Improving stormwater collection and storage system, including dredging the Marina Lagoon, meeting the 100% trash reduction mandate, and to develop a funding strategy for existing infrastructure plants. Excellent. The cost of not investing in stormwater management could be much higher than investing in stormwater management. These problems often mean we need to spend more money to fix the impacts of failing stormwater systems in our community. During heavy rains, stormwater can overwhelm the existing system and cause flooding, which can be costly and decrease property values. System failures happen more frequently with aging infrastructure. And aside from property damage costs, other risks include fines, claims, and potential Clean Water Act violations. Recent large storm events have highlighted the need for funding to address these issues sooner than later. There are citywide capacity constraints, leading to areas of flooding due to undersized culverts and pipes. Floodwaters can also carry dangerous contaminants, including sewage, chemicals, and other hazardous materials, which can create a risk of illness or injury for anyone exposed to them. Our stormwater system was built in the middle of the 20th century and has aged and degraded. Property, properly managed stormwater systems include levees, storage basins like Marina Lagoon, and adequately sized channels, drains, and pumps, all of which can help prevent flooding and protect communities from damage caused by severe storms. all of which can help prevent flooding and protect communities from damage caused by severe storms. Properly managed stormwater systems help keep our beaches open and safe for swimming. Newer solutions in stormwater management, such as green infrastructure and full trash capture devices, can filter out stormwater pollutants such as trash and debris before it enters local waterways in the San Francisco Bay. Next slide. The Marina Lagoon is part of the city's stormwater infrastructure system. This aquatic gem provides flood control and recreation to the entire community, as well as wildlife and ecological benefits. The pump station, which maintains the water levels and prevents flooding, utilizes five pumps that each move 150,000 gallons of water per minute. These pumps are over 40 years old. The lagoon has experienced shallowing and sedimentation, which has resulted in hazards and barriers to navigation, reduced water quality and circulation, and threatens to reduce our stormwater retention capacity. Dredging costs are estimated to be between $10 and $85 million, depending on the size of the project. These challenges also lead to problems with nuisance weeds and degraded water quality. Significant improvements, including dredging, are needed to protect these benefits and assets. Next slide. With so many infrastructure needs, we need funding to maintain and upgrade our stormwater system. Next slide. Our stormwater funding evaluation process started with just looking at the Marina Lagoon and its sedimentation issues. In 2018, we conducted a feasibility study to evaluate the dredging options and their costs. This turned out to be really expensive, and we had no funding source. We realized there were other stormwater infrastructure projects that were also important and had no funding source. It evolved into a comprehensive stormwater system evaluation consisting of a needs assessment, which we presented to the Sustainability and Infrastructure Commission in December of 2020. A funding analysis report, including an evaluation of all funding options for all storm system activities, was presented in February and May of 2021. A community survey was conducted in November of 2021 and presented to council in March of 2022. We are now in the implementation phase, but first I'd like to talk a little about all these efforts in a bit more detail. Excellent, excellent. The goal of this project was to bring all the stormwater costs together in one place and come up with feasible options for funding the program, kind of like creating a hypothetical stormwater enterprise fund or a stormwater utility. The needs assessment reviewed dozens of financial accounts and the activities they represented that supported the various stormwater functions, including capital improvement projects, operations and maintenance, regulatory compliance needs, lagoon costs, and future needs. The total needs represented 68 million in capital improvement projects, including an initial mid-sized lagoon dredging project, 3.6 million for annual operations and maintenance costs, and 1.9 million annually for ongoing lagoon maintenance dredging. Looking at this number from a life cycle or a 30-year model gives us an annual need of about 8.4 million. Next, we examined the potential funding sources and estimated what the rate payers might be faced with in order to fund this program. The project includes extensive community engagement and public opinion polling, which I'll talk more about in a moment. A formal rate study is being produced, which will document the specific activities that the final fee would be based on. And finally, implementation of the stormwater fee requires compliance with Prop 218 procedures, including a public notice and hearing and a ballot process where a majority vote is needed to move forward. Next slide. So as I mentioned, with the 30-year financial model, we need an annual revenue of 8.4 million. That breaks down into the 3.6 for operations and maintenance, 1.9 for ongoing annual lagoon dredging, and 2.9 for capital projects. We simulated how these revenues would be spread across the city's property owners. The fee would be based on impermeable area, which is the most common basis for stormwater charges nationwide. The average annual property fee equates to around $192. Monthly rates for the average home work out to be about $16. Larger commercial properties would pay a larger share. Next slide. The most common type of mechanism for stormwater programs is a user fee, similar to water and garbage fees. These are governed by Prop 218, but stormwater has an extra step, which is the ballot measure. Other balloted options include general tax, a special tax, or a benefit assessment process. Either way, we're looking at a ballot measure, which makes this more of a political process than other rate-setting processes. To help with the situation, the city's plan includes a coordinated and proactive community engagement process. Conducting a public opinion survey early in the process was invaluable in determining the community's priorities, testing messaging, and learning their willingness to invest in the program well before we finalize the parameters and the fee schedule. Next slide. In November of 2021, the city mailed the survey to all parcel owners to learn what priorities of the community were, which projects or programs are most important, and gauge their willingness to invest in a stormwater program in two ways. One, we tested a citywide stormwater fee for all services included in the stormwater funding analysis report. Secondly, we tested a citywide benefit assessment focused solely on Marina Lagoon improvements, such as dredging. The survey included questions about projects and issues that might affect how a voter would view a potential mailed ballot proceeding. For the citywide stormwater fee, annual property-related fees ranging from $120 to $192 were tested in the survey. That equates to about $10 to $16 per month. For the Marina Lagoon assessment, we tested annual assessment rates of $10 for most of the city and 50 to 100 for properties within walking distance or fronting the lagoon, respectively. This rate structure was predicted to raise only $500,000 annually towards our total need of 1.9 million. Therefore, a second larger range of $23 to $350 per year was also tested, although that would still bring in less money than we needed at around 1.2 million annually. Next slide. The survey results showed neutral support for the stormwater fee and marginal support for the Marina Lagoon assessment. The stormwater fee had just under 50% support at the $10 per month level and 46.8% support at the $16 per month level. The lagoon assessment had 54.6% support at the $10 to $150 per year level and 51.6% support at the $23 to $350 per year level. Projects and issues that were more important to the community for both funding options included those that protect the city from, protect the city from local street and property flooding, those that remove trash and pollution from the San Francisco Bay and local waterways, and those that have dedicated funds for stormwater and can't be taken away by the state, county, or even by city council. Conversely, respondents were less likely to support either option if they would specifically fund Marina Lagoon issues such as dredging or as a recreational amenity, or if the funds would only pay for some of the work and not be enough to fully fund the work, and that would require a separate stormwater fee anyway. Next slide. So when we presented the survey results to council in March of 2022, the direction was to move forward with a stormwater fee in the amount of $8 per month after, excuse me, after a robust community engagement program. The direction was to not pursue the Marina Lagoon assessment for now so that the entire community could benefit from the fee, and because there was not enough revenue potential and low support for the core work, which was dredging. Other specific direction was to continue with the fee study and to schedule our outreach and balloting in a way that would avoid the November elections and coordinate with other city priorities and initiatives. This caused a delay in the implementation of the project and brings us to today to discuss our current status. Next slide. So with the current storms, we're reminded of the need for dedicated resources to repair and update our infrastructure. Outreach is in development with the goal of educating on the importance of investing in our stormwater infrastructure. Our survey results are outdated and over a year old, so we have a new tracker survey planned for April of 2023. We'll be testing two rates for a citywide stormwater fee. We will not be retesting the lagoon-focused assessment district. One version of the survey will test the previous council recommended rate averaging $8 per month, which would fund less than half of our overall stormwater utility needs and would require cutting projects and prioritizing the work over a longer timeframe. The second rate that we are retesting is the average of $16 per month, which would fund the entire $8.4 million annual need. Based on the survey results, staff will recommend a final rate to include in the fee report and to move forward in the Prop 218 process. Next slide. City staff and our consultants will conduct the tracker survey beginning in April of 2023. We will return to city council in early June with the results, a proposed rate for the fee report, and potential ballot proceeding. Based on council's direction, on the final fee rate, we will return in mid-July with the fee report and for authorization to commence the mailed notice for protest hearing, according to the process for Proposition 218. We would then return to city council in mid-September for a public hearing, and if a majority protest is not received, we would request authorization to initiate the mailed ballot initiative in October of 2023. We would then return to council again in January 2024 with the results. A majority approval would be required for the initiative to pass. If this schedule is followed and the mailed ballot proceeding is successful, the final fee approval would be in January 2024 with fees levied on tax bills in the fall of 2024. Excellent. So this concludes my prepared presentation, and we request your feedback and are available to answer questions.
Thank you. Does any council member want to start off with questions? Councilmember Hedges, do you have any questions to start?
No, I've lived with this. I will have some comments, but the one comment I want to make now is that was really a great and very comprehensive presentation. And I'm very happy that Sarah made it and did such a nice job.
Complimenting you.
Say it again.
Comprehensive, excellent presentation.
And I will say that every time we have witch and weed infestation, she catches the brunt of people calling her angry, so she's got a very calm head.
Thanks, Rich.
Any other questions? Yes.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I know much has gone into that analysis over many years by many people. When you said that this proposal would include a sort of a medium level of dredging, what did that mean?
So that means, oh, sorry, I can step away. That means that the capital improvement portion, $68 million, includes a $9 million Marina Lagoon dredging project. So when we amortize that over the 30 years and use the life cycle approach, we're bringing in $2.9 million on an annual basis. We're also bringing in 1.9 million on an annual basis for the ongoing maintenance. So between the two of those, we would either need to save up enough to get the nine or we would use that revenue as collateral to secure other types of funding.
Great. So following up on that, in your plan, how long would it take to dredge the entire lagoon?
That's a good question. We would need to have a full-on dredging construction design initiated with some of this money, and that would be able to tell us more. It would, I don't know, I've never, yeah.
Well, I'll learn, yeah. And as I understand, there is a federal law about how you dredge that has tremendously escalated the cost estimates. Am I correct?
Well, there are permitting requirements. We need to get permits from the Army Corps of Engineer, the Regional Water Quality Control Board, Department of Fish and Wildlife, BCDC, I'm forgetting what that acronym stands for at the moment, Bay Conservation District. So that's what adds on is the planning to get, the planning effort to give those agencies all the information they need to make sure that what we're doing with the dredged spoils is in compliance with all the different regulations that we're not performing the work in a way that would violate any of all of those different agency-specific regulations, which are set out for water quality and riparian corridors and.
And the money for the annual maintenance, would that include people as well as activity? Because we'd obviously have to have somebody managing this.
No, that cost would come out of the operations and maintenance budget, as far as city staff. 1.9 would include people as far as design and construction for the ongoing dredging.
Okay. And just thinking, bigger picture, this effort would be coordinated with, I mean, meaning the whole stormwater, updating, redesign, rebuild, would be coordinated with all the other sea level rise, climate change, all those activities, one shoreline, so that we could be as integrated and take as much advantage and vice versa, I assume.
That would be, yes.
And then moving to the survey, why was the decision made only to do two price points? Because at least from my professional experience, you've got the low end, you've got the high end. It often is good to triangulate somewhere in the middle.
Understood. So with the survey for the stormwater fee, every parcel in the city received a different number on that survey that was targeted towards them. So when I say $16, that's representing an average homeowner. So if a homeowner had a larger impervious area, they probably saw a little bit higher of a dollar amount on their survey. Same with the commercial parcels are going to see a larger dollar amount on that. So when these numbers were presented, those generalizations.
Yes, as well they should be, but just from a, being able to understand the research and the resident tolerance or the parcel owner tolerance to fees. There's an eight, there's a 16. Did you consider trying to get to like a 12?
Did you want to, I'm not sure how to answer that. Did we consider a 12?
So, good evening. Council Zelia Metch, Public Works Director. So the first time that we did a survey, we actually, to Sarah's explanation, the, we were gauging the willingness to pay. So we surveyed at the full cost of $16 for a single, average, single-family home. And at that point, based on the survey results, we, as Sarah shared, we didn't get the support for the $16 fee. We also focused on the district only, which was a much higher rate, hundreds of dollars. So based on the assessment, we were actually going to proceed with half the cost. We determined that that willingness to pay would likely be higher at maybe a $10 range, but we are, we have reassessed, given the challenges we had on New Year's Eve, and we're going back to survey that willingness to pay and hoping that the support is there. That willingness to pay and hoping that the support is there for the sixteen dollars, sixteen dollar a month average rate.
Yeah, and I think it, to your point, it's, it's a very different environment. I'm just concerned that if there is any, there's pushback on the sixteen. The only other number you have to fall back on is eight.
In, right, indeed. And that, those were the two, um, we didn't, we wanted to simplify it based on the feedback that we received uh last year. But also to test that, that original higher rate based on the, uh, the fact that we're living in new.
And I would. Strongly encourage and. The team to look at a, a mid-rate point.
So testing, so comments, three, three rates, so sixteen, perhaps twelve and.
Yeah, but I, I can reiterate that during comment period. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah, for your presentation. I, I think we were kind of waiting to hear this when we heard more about the after effects of the. The, the New Year's Eve flow we had, but do we have any idea how much reduction we've had in capacity? And water capacity in the forty or so years since the lagoon was made or was, was put in place? Like, do we know? That we lost forty percent of capacity and we lost sixty percent of capacity? Cause we, we know those numbers.
We know those numbers based off of a twenty eighteen dredging analysis that we did. I can't. Give them to you off the top of my head, but what I can say is that. Most of the uh stormwater retention in the lagoon is in the upper levels. So the sedimentation is occurring at the lower levels. The assessment that we did in twenty eighteen. Pretty much said that we haven't lost stormwater capacity yet because of that, but it's just a matter of time because we're bringing in. A good amount of sediment every year. Yeah.
I, I wanted to ask, um, cause I think for most ratepayers, they want to know. How much am I paying and what is it based on? So if you don't mind elaborating on, uh. You know, is it, is it based on a parcel size? Is proximity to certain infrastructure factored in? How, how are rates um specified or, um, or determined?
It's based on the amount of impervious surface in any given parcel. And to answer it in more detail than that, I'd have to rely, I'd have to ask our consultants who are online. There's a formula that they have that. Outputs a rate for any specific parcel based on the mapping that they do.
I don't need to, I don't think we need to get that technical. I think more, more, um, you know, it's, so ratepayers are all, um. Parcel owners, meaning so all property owners, meaning commercial plus residential. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Um, and so for example, um, like condo owners would be, have some sort of like, um. Fraction of a rate that would be determined by their total, um, parcel.
Condo owners. That's a good question. I don't, I'd have to ask Jerry how they came up with those rates for.
Yes, sir.
With condos on them.
But I, I guess essentially it's just property owners, all, all property owners, commercial and residential.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. And I think, you know, for. For the public's sake, and I don't want to put you on the spot, Drew, but I kind of will, but um, I think it's. Uh, when we look at the, you know, what we're asking community members to potentially pay uh sixteen dollars a month. Right? Which equates to, you know, a couple hundred dollars a year and look at the true cost of the flood that happened, right? Which we actually have, um, some. Some general scoping right now and we'll have much more detail when, you know, when, when all of the FEMA individual assistance. Um, awards actually go out, you know, the city itself has, um, has now combined fund over two hundred thousand dollars for individual assistance. And um, Drew, do you remember your, um, your assessment that you filed with FEMA just to try to get a scope of total damages? After the December flood?
So it was about six hundred thousand.
Okay.
It was just a really rough estimate.
Yeah. So I have the form that you filled out in front of me. And um, and it was uh closer to nine hundred and ten thousand dollars for our private property damage. Um, and uh sixty-eight thousand dollars for public property damage. And um. And it, I'm sorry, no. But that was a low ball. That was just in category E to public buildings and equipment. The total estimate. For public property damage was six hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars.
Sorry, that's what I was answering. So, yeah. So we were at, and I think we've revised that. We've. Kathy's been handling our FEMA, so I'll let her, I'll turn it over to her.
So our. I, I don't remember the numbers off the top of my head that we estimated. Those were very rough guesses for the private damage. For the public damage, it did include a pretty large allocation for hillside, which we've since determined. We, we pulled out, so our current public allocation request is closer to four hundred thousand. Um, and on, and on the private side, again, any information that's in there was really a, um. A very broad. Guessimate of potential damage.
Yeah, thank you so much. And then, um, you know, and we have actually a resident expert on, um, on. What it means to be in the FEMA flood zone. And the, the cost to ratepayers and homeowners in the form of flood insurance, and that's Rich Hedges. Um, and so, you know, many folks in my neighborhood in North Central and also in North Shoreview are saddled with thousands of dollars of insurance. Um, every month, and if not every year, I've heard just mind-boggling stories of people paying, you know, ten thousand dollars a year. Um, that on the high end. And so, um, so, you know, what, I just think, you know, it's important when we're having this conversation that we're servicing the true. Um, you know, the true calculated cost to the community of deferred investment in, in critical infrastructure. Right? When we don't invest in infrastructure, we end up paying that price. Our community ends up paying that price. And so I was really happy to see, um, this come back with a recommended, um, evaluation of what a full scope would look like. When we did the first community survey, we had been in five, six-year drought. Like, we hadn't seen rain. We, like, what was raining in California? We already forgot what it was like to experience rain. Um, and now I think there's a really different, um, you know, a level of awareness and education about what are the. What storm, like, everyone knows where their storm drain is now. You know, just a year ago, nobody knew. Um, we had an uptick of, um, adopted drain by forty-one, forty-two people just in this last, you know, this last year. So, um, I, you know, I just wanted to kind of highlight some of tho- those data points as we have this conversation. And I do, I know, I, I second. Um, Deputy Mayor Nash's concept of, of testing for, for a, a low, high, and a mid-tier. I think that that's always a good idea, and that's what we've done in previous ballot initiatives. Um, and I think that, you know, having, um, having, you know, statistical data. About different tiers will lead us down much clearer pathways in terms of what decision points we end up going, you know, making. About what the community will support. We don't want to go through the effort of running a ballot if we don't, if we're not competent, it's going to succeed. Right? Um, it's, it's, it's wasted time and effort. So I think it, I think to your point, it makes sense to do that as well. I'm getting into comments. Um, so council member, oh, I already asked him. Okay. So we'll open it up for our public comment.
We are now moving to the public comment portion for this section. As mentioned previously, we do have some attendees who are currently in conference room A. If you are in conference room A and you wish to speak in this item, please come to conference room C. Staff will be able to assist direct you there. Please. Submit a request to speak, yellow speaker slip. If you're in Zoom, please raise your hand. I'll give people a few moments just to submit their requests for public comment. For the mayor, I currently have four speakers. And we will be taking the in-person speakers first. I have Mike, Michael Dillon. Michael and Sandra Dillon. And maybe in conference room A. In which case we will move on to our. Remote panelists and our first speaker will be Rich Kent, Rich Krantz. Rich, please unmute your mic.
Well, good evening, folks. Uh, my name is Rich Brands.
One moment, Rich, one moment.
Sure.
Go ahead, Rich. We will reset your timer.
Perfect. Thanks so much for, um, taking so much interest in this really serious thing. A couple of two things. One, I think to charge people along the lagoon only for this project is. Uh, wrong-headed. It's everybody's water. It'd be like charging people who live along one oh one for one oh one construction projects. I, I think intuitively, you all know that. Moving on, uh. Once you get a hold of your panel of experts, subject matter experts, you might find, uh, most bang for the buck by spot dredging. Down by the slalom course where the water comes in, uh, up by Ace Hardware and of course up by, um, the pumping stations. Uh, we'll know more about this, this week. The pumping station needs, um, a sufficient amount of, um, head pressure. To keep the pumps from cavitating. And, um, that would probably pay biggest dividends right away to, to achieve that. Additionally, alongside of, I believe it's, um, Edison, uh, by Port Starboard. There's a back bay which would be perfect for dropping dredging. And then perhaps by crane, move it over into the yard to de-water it. You'd also get a lot of, um. Help, maybe some insight by talking to Foster City. They've been through this a number of years ago and have become a pretty expert at this. Uh, anyway, I yield the rest of my time and I wish you well. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now move on to our next speaker, which will be Daniel Shore. Daniel, please unmute your mic.
Hi, this is Daniel Shore. Um, I agree with the last speaker a hundred percent. I think, um, we know that this is, Marina Lagoon is a resource for the entire community. It is the storm. Water catchment for the entire community. It, the cost. To maintain it needs to be bared by everyone. Um, because they all share and the last storm, New Year's Eve storm proved it. So we, we need to be fair about it. We also need to make citizens aware of. How the calculation is done. Because the last survey, I could not for the life of me figure out how the calculation was done. And I looked really in. Online, all over the place. We all need to feel like it's a fair way. That that calculation is calculated. The impervious space per parcel is. Understandable, but if you don't know how to, how it's calculated, it's, it doesn't mean anything. Um. I think. This is long overdue and I wholeheartedly support the council on going forward. I also think the third, the medium. Uh. Alternative of twelve dollars a month is definitely something that needs to be surveyed. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Rick Sekuda. Rick, please unmute your mic.
Hi there. Good morning. This is Rick Sekuda. Good evening. Uh, Rick Sekuda, Marina Lagoon. Uh, great work by Sarah Scheid and her staff. I agree with the previous speakers, Rich and Daniel. Um. I would like to add one other thing, though, in addressing, uh, council member DS Nash's comment that adding that third rate in. I would suggest adding a higher rate in because if our target is sixteen dollars. We should add something higher than that, let's say twenty dollars, so that might point more people to vote for the sixteen-dollar rate, which is where we need to end up. So I would strongly suggest going with a higher rate than sixteen. I think sixteen dollars a month is tolerable. Given the events of twelve thirty-one and the awareness that is brought and the publicity that is gained. Uh, and with a strong education program by the departments, uh, I think we can make that fly. Um, the other thing is if we start getting into these variable rates based on impervious surface. I think we're setting ourselves up for failure. Because you're just going to get into arguments about what impervious surface is and how much you have and why mine is better than yours. And I think, uh, we're, we're just going to go nowhere with that. Um, but I think all the comments have been made. I applaud city council and Department of Public Works staff. And, uh, I'll yield the rest of my time. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no further public comment.
So, uh, I think just for clar- clarification purposes, I, I think that there's still maybe some misunderstanding that. At this time, the council is not considering doing any evaluation or polling on a lagoon only assessment. So I just want to make that as clear as possible that this is, um, this, this would be, um, a, 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 um. This would be a poll for, a citywide poll for all property owners, commercial and residential. And the rate would be based on the size of your parcel and, um, and some calculations of pervious, um. Pervious. Surface. Thank you. Um, so, so I think, you know, I hear the concern coming from lagoon residents that you don't want to be singled out and you don't want to be. Solely saddled with the burden of paying for citywide infrastructure, which is completely understandable. That is absolutely not supported by what the council is deciding tonight. So I just want to make that as explicit as possible if there's a misunderstanding there. Um. Let's, uh, close public comment with that and, um, and then it'll open it up to, um, council deliberation.
Could I go forward, Mary? Please. This is Rich Hedges. Could I go forward?
Yes, please. Council member Lauren.
Thank you. Uh, just briefly, I. Appreciate the staff presentation and generally support the staff suggestion. I think I. Am, uh, appreciate the deputy mayor and mayor's comments about having a third pricing option and, um, just. Anecdotally, you know, personally, my mind wandered into what Rick Sekuda mentioned in public comment about having that third option potentially be a higher option. But I, I would be happy to, uh, just leave that as, uh. A small comment and defer to others who, uh, may know better on that exact thing. That, that would be. My comment.
May I speak merely, merely?
Thank you to staff and to all the people making public comment. I think everyone on the council agrees that making sure we have sufficient stormwater protection. And drainage and everything that's involved in this project is one of our fundamental duties and responsibilities. If one of our responsibilities is to keep our community safe. This is about as fundamental to safety as we can get. So I cannot support this effort more strongly. I think there is, as everyone has mentioned, December thirty-first was a wake-up call. And people, whether you were in the lagoon or in San Mateo Park or down in Lori Wood. Um, you, you really understood what was happening. And we all woke up to it. And so we as a community have to come together and figure out how to do it. And I commend staff. For using the information and the work that you have done for many years. And coming back and saying, how do we update this? How do we make it more relevant? Uh, so I am very, very much in favor of this. I think it is going to be an equally large. Effort on all of our parts to create an education and outreach program that makes this successful. Because even at the end of this year with twelve thirty-one only minorly in the rearview mirror. People forget and they see the numbers and they go, oh my God, I don't want another tax. I don't want another fee. We have to figure out a plan where all of us are being ambassadors for this. We have to use video. We have to use photos. We have to do all the things that staff has already done. But I think we also have to call on the ambassadors, the people who were physically personally impacted by this and request them to go out and the ambassadors to talk about why this is important. Because when neighbors are telling neighbors, whether you're a business or a homeowner, here's what happened to me and here's what it meant. We all took calls from people and did listen, but boy, it was scary. And it still is scary about what can happen. So I think we have to make this a very human thing. And so we all have to be involved in the education. So I would really welcome the opportunity to talk about what your recommendations are on education and see how we can use the entire community to make it happen. And I just throw in for analysis by the consultants as to all the fees we're talking about testing our monthly fees. Have we thought about a flat annual fee and should we? Don't think we need to get a discussion right now, but I would appreciate that being considered. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Hedges?
Yes, thank you. Just a little history. I've lived here 53 years. The lagoon was here when I came here. However, the house I live in was not here, nor none of the houses along the lagoon. The lagoon lagoon was dug to protect San Mateo Village, Glendale Village, the racetrack, Fiesta Gardens, 19th Avenue, Sunny Bray, and some parts of the central neighborhood. I showed a map of what used to flood at United Homeowners last summer, and I think there was some skepticism. Every one of those neighborhoods flooded in December 31st. So the skepticism has abated. I favor the $16 and I think doing a higher rather than a medium, 28 and 12. And here's these cost estimates were done in 2018. My memory tells me costs have escalated with construction since then. And it will take some time to get the permits. When we did the FEMA work, it took several years to get all the permits. One particular agency held us up for a large contribution to the Don Edwards Wildlife Community, simply a personal issue of theirs. And so that added another couple of years to us getting people out of FEMA. The remarks that Mayor Lee made about the cost of FEMA, even back then, if you waited till the bank forced it, it could be as high as $7,000 a year. Right now, people who've called about flood insurance are giving me numbers of 3,500 that they were told to depending on who they called, to $7,000 a year. That will push some of the people in the neighborhoods that in District Four out of San Mateo. I'm telling you, because many of them are on the edge now. So old Ernie Hills, who's now passed, told me around 2008 that when he lived in Sunny Bray, the water before the lagoon was dug, got up to his, he didn't use these words, but I'll use them for polite company, got up to his bottom. So it's clear that the lagoon can only support the neighborhoods upstream if it's not completely full. And in traveling with Councilmember Newsom, I had such respect for him, driving around during the driving rain, looking at the creeks and seeing how small the the culverts are, especially in Laurawood Creek. And what many people don't realize that neighborhoods up the hill flooded because of the small tributaries, like in the Laurel Creek, the creek was full because the lagoon was full. And then they have small culverts. And as far as the estimates of damage, one homeowner told me and Mr. Newsom that he felt his damage was north of of $100,000. And he really questioned because it really got high. It saturated his underflooring and was afraid maybe because his midso, mudso isn't connected to the foundation. It's an older home. Then it moved the house slightly on the foundation. So we really don't know the total cost right now for private homeowners. The way that the fees worked on FEMA, and this will be similar, is that depending on the size of commercial property, they paid far more. Single-family homeowners paid in a range of 100 to 115 or $20 a year. Our condos paid $52 a year, but you have to take in consideration that on our acreage, we had 312 units as compared to a square mile of single-family homes. So it is is set to the type of dwelling and what percentage they should pay based on their their size and their density. Just a couple of minutes. Let me look. Yeah, 16 is where I've landed. I can't see doing any any less. I would make a request for the parking reg development department to quit putting sand on the beach. Because every time we get a huge rain, it runs it, it runs it into the into the lagoon and silts it up even more. I know it's very nice to look at the sand and to play in it, but it's not a good idea for flood control. The other thing that ABAG is actually looking for sediment for the reconstituting the the shoreline for growing back the the traditional grass that we've always had along the shoreline of the bay before the before the bay was filled in so much. So that might be one place if our dredging is clean enough to offload it to ABAG. And that would actually cut down on the cost of the dumping of the of the residue into the into the dumping grounds. So I'll be happy to answer any questions because I've been through this with FEMA, very similar what we're going to have to go through with dredging. And we would add, we're going to have to be careful with our dredging because there's really especially great birding and wildlife that has to be protected along the lagoon. So thank you for letting me talk about this.
I don't have much to add. I think our council is for the most part in agreement that, you know, we obviously need to take action here. I would I would be in agreement that we should probably start with a higher rate so that we can settle where where we wanted that $16 price point. So maybe instead of doing 12 and eight, we do 12, 16 and 20. I wanted to clarify, I know this is comments, not questions, but the pervious surface basically means that square footage of of your lot is going to contribute to how much you pay. So someone has a bigger lot regardless of their closeness to a tributary or a creek, that they'll pay more and that's based on the size of the lot. Is that accurate?
Almost. Yes, it's it's the size of the lot, but the size of when we say impervious surface, that means hardscape, concrete, not not anything that the rainwater is going to soak into like a yawn, a lawn. I'm sorry, but it's going to run. It's going to cause the water to run off.
That case would be the the size of your structure and cement.
Yes.
The only other thing is I concur with the council, Councilmember Hedges, that perhaps instead of putting sand back on the beach, we should have our very own Pebble Beach in San Mateo. It isn't quite as nice as the warm sand, but I we watched the sand end up in the lagoon anyway. So just something to think about. And otherwise, I'm ready to make a motion when when everyone else has got their comments in. Thank you.
I actually had two follow-up questions. One, one is like, is it feasible or is it justifiable to to survey for a higher rate than we have done cost estimates for? I've never heard of that, but I mean, I know we know costs are escalating, so there's probably a justification for it, but I've never seen us do something like that.
I need to double check with the consultants. That my thought was that the analysis that we did pretty much costed out everything and that was the highest rate. You know, we have to justify our costs, but I need to double check with them on that final answer.
Okay.
Sir, the mayor, could we make one additional clarification? Because I think the Sarah, maybe you or the consultant or maybe the Public Works Director, Azalea, could could clarify that the nature of the survey in terms of my understanding is, is that different people get different numbers. So it's not necessarily a matter of someone who gets pulled at 20 may say no, but you're not going to know their tolerance for 16 versus them seeing 20, 16 and 12 and saying, sorry, I don't like, I don't like 20, but I like 16. So I think if we're going to pull at 20, that means we want to capture 20 versus settling for 16. Is that fair?
Yeah, if is Jerry, can can you unmute and?
Yes. Can you hear me okay? Can you hear?
Turn you up.
Jerry, go ahead. We can hear you now.
Can you hear me all right then?
Yes, please.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, the city manager is correct that each first of all, let me back up. We do a mail survey rather than traditional phone survey that that a lot of you are used to. And that's because we're trying to mimic what the ballot will look like when they get the ballot. We're also using the universe of property owners rather than registered voters. Now, there's a huge overlap between the two, but that's an important thing to capture in our survey. With a mailed survey, we don't get to do the the auction style testing of multiple rates with each person. So each person who gets a survey is going to see one rate. And so we divide our universe into two. Sometimes we've done three sets of rates and then the rates are based on the calculation we do. So a commercial property owner will be answering a survey based on, you know, it might be 10 times that much for a commercial property as for a residential home. So these are basically structured just like the ballot will be later on. We typically do two rates knowing and you'll notice in the results that that were summarized in the presentation. The 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 sensitivity to price is actually fairly flat from the $10 to the $16 a month. So there's not a lot of new information you're going to get with a mid-range rate, although we have done that in the past and we can certainly take a look at that in this. To try and push to 20 just to settle for 16, that's that's not something we can really do. And it's not something I would advise. That's kind of like push polling. We're trying to get the poll to push opinion around rather than just measure opinion. So that's not something we can really accomplish in this survey. And it wouldn't, doesn't really help us when the ballots go out in a mail format. Hopefully that answers the questions on this.
It does. Thank you so much. And then I just had one tiny follow-up question. Hopefully it's a softball about the culverts. So I just wanted, you know, we we know from talking to residents that, you know, that there were a lot of backups of further up, you know, in the even in the hills that might have been attributed to some of the size of the culverts or bottlenecking. And I'm wondering, I just want to clarify that the scoping of our stormwater infrastructure improvements includes though, you know, the consideration of redesign and and widening the culverts.
Drain master plan and also do a condition and a capacity assessment and that would be included.
Okay. So the storm, the master plan would ultimately dictate the full scoping of all of the infrastructure improvements that would then be funded by the assessment or the the two, the fee, yeah, the two 18p, 218, 212, 218. Okay, those are my two questions. So based on what Jerry just said, I'm comfortable with moving forward with the staff recommendation of my only problem with it is I wish I could move faster. I would love to put this out, you know, next month, but I know speed is never, you know, government's strong suit. So here we are. Are we are we in consensus about moving forward with the proposed rate? Yes? Okay, do we have a feeling? I I'm comfortable with moving forward with the staff recommendation.
I also am. I would like to withdraw my previous comment related to that.
Okay.
I'm okay with moving forward with it.
Okay. All right. I think we have consensus. Do we need a motion?
No, you don't need a motion. I mean, the staff recommendation was just to hear the presentation and provide feedback. So I would like Sarah to see and Azalea to see if staff needs what they need.
Thank you so much for your work on this. Okay, we are, we made it. Thank you all for hanging in with us. It's only 10 o'clock. This is early night for us. So we're on to item number 22, Complete Streets Plan. Introduction and Community Engagement. And it looks like we have a presentation from our principal transportation planner, Sue Ellen Atkinson. Welcome, Sue Ellen.
All right. Good evening. Mayor Lee, Councilmembers Sue Ellen Atkinson, I'm the Principal Transportation Planner in the City's Public Works Department. And I have with me tonight, Carrie Moe from our consultant team, Fair and Cures. So next slide. We're here to present tonight on the citywide streets plan and we'll start off with a project overview. Next slide. All right. So first off, what is the complete street? A complete street is a street that is safe, comfortable and accessible for all users in multiple, multiple forms of travel. So not just a roadway for for a vehicle, but a roadway that accommodates pedestrians on sidewalks and maybe some active public spaces like seating and transit lanes, bicycle facilities and green infrastructure as well. Next slide, please. So why are we talking about complete streets? Streets historically throughout the country, including in San Mateo, have been vehicle-centric for a number of decades. We're looking at how we get around through different ones and sometimes that requires changes to our streets. And so in looking at complete streets, we're able to reduce congestion by providing other options for mobility like pedestrians, like increased opportunity for reliable transit, like bicycle facilities. We're looking to improve safety for all modes by supporting safe, accessible travel choices. So giving an option, if you're able to walk somewhere, having a safe and comfortable route to do that and to improve safety for all transportation modes, our roadways require changes or may require changes. We'll talk a little bit about the limited right of way that we have and choices that we have to make to accommodate more than one mode. And we are increasing our population in the city. We're all aware of that. And in order to get around in a city with additional population, we want to provide additional transportation options. So not everyone has to be reliant on their car, creating additional congestion. And also an age-friendly community. We want to support aging in place by providing means for seniors to travel. So that's transit, pedestrian access, and that's micro mobility access. Next slide, please. And so what are we going to do through this project? There's not a consistent definition from city to city on what a complete streets plan looks like. But in general, the complete streets plan has these types of elements. And so there is clear multimodal network maps for the whole city. Right now, we have a bunch of disparate plans. We have a pedestrian master plan that has a pedestrian network for the city. We have a bike master plan that has a bike network. We have our roadway network very well mapped out. And this plan will give us that network with all modes combined. And we'll be developing a street manual to identify our complete streets design methods. So that will give us opportunity when we're designing projects in the future or when private development projects come in that are making changes in the roadway to specify those standards by which they must construct those streets. And it will result in concept designs. So that will be 10 concept designs for various situations that we may encounter throughout the city that give us a roadmap for how to design and construct those multimodal streets. And it'll be informed by a robust engagement process that we'll talk about a little bit more later in this presentation. And ultimately, hopefully, achieve council adoption and become an adopted document for the city. And next slide, please. So the big question is, how do we get there? And like I mentioned, we have a lot of disparate plans. And like I mentioned, we have a lot of disparate plans. Those networks have been created unilaterally. We've looked at the pedestrian network. We've looked at the bike network. Samtrans has looked at and Caltrain frankly have looked at the transit network. All of those are really looking at one mode, and we don't have a good way to put all of those together. So we're taking a layered network approach where we're going to layer the pedestrian network on top of our bike master plan network, on top of our auto roadway network, on top of the transit networks from Samtrans and Caltrain, and find out where we have potential conflicts, where we need to prioritize different modes. And from there, we get to work on figuring out how we prioritize different modes of travel throughout the city. So what we're hoping to achieve in the end is a prioritization by roadway for for modes. A design manual for the standards for implementation, our concept designs for how complete streets will be completed throughout the city. And in various scenarios. And really a guiding document for us moving forward on how to re-envision the city by having different ways to get around. Next slide. All right, we're going to get into some animation now. Okay, so in terms of how we look at our existing streets and then kind of retrofit them really to to be multimodal or to have different modes. In some places, we have really wide roadways. Like this is an eighty-two foot available right of way. That's a lot of real estate to make different decisions on. So in the existing condition, it might be very focused on vehicles on parking with narrow sidewalks and shared lanes for bikes. If you can hit next, there we go. And so with a lot of right-of-way, we have a lot of space to make different choices. So we can add in widened sidewalks, we can add in separated bike lanes, and we're still able to achieve vehicle travel and parking. Next slide. In other parts of the city, through a lot of the city, actually, we have less right-of-way available. We can't widen our streets very easily. So we have to work within the space that we have from sidewalk to sidewalk. And that's where we get into the prioritization and making choices about how we're going to prioritize the use of our right-of-way. So that may be maintaining the existing condition where we're prioritizing vehicle travel and parking. Hit next. In some places, we might prioritize pedestrian access. So we use some parking to widen sidewalks and add pedestrian scale lighting. Next slide. And in other places, that might look like prioritizing vehicle pedestrian and bicycle travel within that limited space. So as we're going through that layered network, we're going to be able to identify the places where those networks overlap and where we have to make some some decisions there. Next slide. So we're really excited about this project, and it comes with a lot of opportunities for the city. Thanks. So first, it'll give us the opportunity to look at transportation safety across all modes, which we haven't done to date. And also include our green infrastructure, as Sarah just mentioned in her previous presentation. Next. We'll come out of this with clear design standards for our roadways moving forward that address all modes. And so not just what a sidewalk might look like, but how we achieve a certain sidewalk width and how we build the bike lane and how we build the vehicle travel lane and how we have transit priority. So it gives us really clear standards moving forward. We'll be able to begin addressing community identified transportation equity issues that we've heard from the community through prior projects. We can start to look into those issues and address how we can modify those moving forward. Next. And then we are able to start that right-of-way prioritization in limited space. We have a lot of narrow roadways throughout the city. So that's going to be a focus of this project. Next, the project comes with challenges. And the plan is citywide. We're looking at all of the roadway throughout the city. But when we go to implement projects, we're going to be at the street level. And so we do have the challenge of having the community conversations about a very broad plan while getting an input on those changes that are going to be felt very dearly at the street level. Next, increasing the transportation options on a roadway may result in roadway changes. So we might reduce the number of travel lanes, or we might narrow travel lanes or reduce turn lanes or other changes that might happen like one-way streets. And so in order to increase the number of ways to get around that we have on each road, the road may look a little bit different in the future. Planning for mobility options requires a shift. And like I mentioned, we are a very vehicle-centric city right now. And planning for a future where we're looking at different ways of getting around requires a shift away from just thinking about getting in your car for every single trip. And then finally, I have building trust, particularly with underserved communities between the city and those communities. That is a challenge that we look forward to moving forward with.
All right, and this will be my last slide. So we do have a very tight timeline for this project. This project is funded through a grant from the Caltrans Sustainable Transportation Planning Grant Program. We have a defined scope for the project that's been improved by Caltrans for that funding. And we have a deadline on February twenty twenty-four to wrap up the plan. So we are moving forward, starting with community engagement. And at that point, I will turn it over to Carrie to speak to our draft community engagement plan.
Thanks, Sue Ellen. So one of the key focal points is really inclusive community engagement. And so in your packet, you have the draft engagement implementation plan, which we're happy to answer any questions on during the Q and A. But for now, I'd like to review just the highlights of that approach with you all. So first, I wanted to share the engagement goals. They're threefold. So first, to ensure that residents, all residents are aware that the plan is being created what the plan is and why it's important to everyone in the community. The second is to really have robust and diverse community participation throughout the process that's really representative of the full range of demographics, perspectives, and experiences within the larger San Mateo community. And this includes a focus on traditionally underrepresented and marginalized communities in the process. And then thirdly, as Sue Ellen referenced before, we really want to build rapport and alignment between the communities and the cities to really make sure that we have that public trust in the process going forward. Here are some of the engagement principles that are really foundational to what we're going to do with this planning process. First is really about inclusion, making sure we have a diversity of voices in the process. Again, we're focused on building relationships, lifting up underrepresented voices, engaging historically marginalized communities, and really creating accessible and inclusive and welcoming spaces for a variety of people. Our process intended to be collaborative and to really make space for all members of the community. And then we're going to learn a lot on the way too. So we're going to adapt and iterate as we go and make sure that we're putting the the best ideas and best practices forward. So I want to talk a little bit about some of the target audiences. There'll be a few that pop up on this slide here. These are largely consistent with some of the focal points of the general plan. And we've also, those are the first four that you see. And then we've also added to that seniors and residents with disabilities. So first, as I mentioned before, engagement with underrepresented low-income neighborhoods is really critical. As is engagement with non-English speakers. Approximately nineteen percent of San Mateo residents speak Spanish at home and about sixteen percent speak Asian and Pacific either languages. So making sure that we're having engagement in languages that people are comfortable with is really important during this process. We will be providing interpretation and translation. We want to make sure that we're getting in touch with renters as well as homeowners, specifically renters, because that really represents a large portion of the city, about forty-six percent of San Mateo households are residents, and that's even higher in some of the underrepresented communities that we're hoping to really engage with. And then on the age front, we want to make sure that we're really engaging the young and the old in particular. These are larger demographic groups in San Mateo. We also want to make sure that we're engaging with folks with disabilities. People with disabilities or consider them pedestrian sorrows regardless of their ability. So that's a critical component when we're talking about active transportation, for example. You go to the next slide. And you can kind of click through these. So we're going to use a variety of different engagement activities so that we can try and reach people in a variety of formats that may feel comfortable to them. And we'll be doing each of these tools in different ways kind of throughout the the process, which we'll see on the next slide. We're going to start with stakeholder interviews to really understand the needs of different community residents. We're going to look at focus groups. We have a slightly larger format where we make it a kind of mix of different groups represented in different community groups, for example, represented or citywide groups. Getting them in the room and kind of talking together. We're going to look at bike, walk, and transit tours. So that might be riding the bus together. That might be walking around different parts of the city or biking around different parts of the city, which we may engage with later in the project. And then throughout our engagement process, we're going to have interactive online engagement platform and website. Social pinpoint is the format that we'll be using for that, but there'll always be a way to engage online throughout this this planning process. Then we're going to use pop-up events, which have been really helpful for kind of capturing people as they go about their daily activities and kind of engaging with them and meeting more people in the community who may not want to be drawn out of a shop necessarily. So this is a great way to kind of meet additional people out as they go about their lives. And then we will also, a format that folks are familiar with, have a couple of work, public workshops throughout the process as well. If you go to the next slide. And you can scroll down. Thank you. And this slide just gives you a sense of how we'll use those different tools throughout the process. So we've met with the Sustainability and Infrastructure Commission two weeks back. We're meeting with council this evening. And from there, we'll be moving into the existing conditions and needs phases of the project. So there, we're going to use stakeholder interviews, focus groups, and online engagement as the primary tools. And as we go into the kind of mapping, kind of network development phases, we'll use even broader range. And then the third phase of the project, we'll kind of talk about priority projects and concepts. And then we'll continue to use a range of tools in that third phase of the project as well. So you can expect kind of touchpoints here in the spring and the summer as well as into the into the fall. And I'm going to pass it back to Sue Ellen to talk to the commission.
All right, as Carrie mentioned, we went to the Sustainability and Infrastructure Commission about two weeks ago with very similar content. And I wanted to share some of their feedback with you. And they recommended a few additional stakeholders, families which are already, we're we're trying to include in target audiences. And community and parent leaders, neighborhood associations, and larger businesses. And they recommended emphasizing green infrastructure elements in the plan. Suggested considering quick response engagement techniques like QR codes, like on sidewalk decals or sandatories or something like that. Focus on education about what complete streets are so that the community knows what they're providing feedback for. And then engaging residents and businesses early on about potential street level changes, like parking changes, like lane reductions, et cetera. Next slide. And so we prepared three talking points, sort of. And we're looking for feedback on the draft engagement plan and prepared some thoughts for you to consider while you're going through your comments. So first, I'm sorry, I should say council, I apologize. Does the council have any general questions on the community engagement plan or the plan's approach? Second, are the proposed engagement activities varied enough to reach user citywide? Are there any activities that you could suggest in lieu of any of the ones that are proposed? And finally, are there any additional stakeholders that the council would recommend, including? Next slide. With that, that concludes the staff presentation. Carrie and I are available for any questions and Azelia as well.
So this is the time where council asks questions. Maybe we can have the questions from that last slide up so that we we can go through any specific questions we might have as it relates to the last slide in direction. Does anyone want to start with questions? Councilmember Lorraine.
At the risk of stealing some thunder, we've received a number of public comments asking for review of the North Central Bike Wanes Project to be included in the Complete Streets Plan. Could this be done? And if so, what steps would need to be taken to do it?
I'll invite Azelia up to speak to that point.
Azelia Mitch again. If you go back to one of the previous slides that shows the layered, the layers. Keep going. Oh, I know. Then forget it. Too many things. So to answer your question, currently, there are built bicycle lanes in North Central. So for us, that is an existing network that would be part of the assessment as part of the the layered work. The scope as Sue Ellen noted in this in this assessment is defined. So what we would propose is to create a separate project that would focus on North Central specifically to take a look at the circulation, to take a look at the priorities. And then to get the feedback from the community on how that network should change so that we don't disrupt the grant funding that we have as part of this, but we leave. We, in conjunction, see if we can sort of spearhead a focused effort on North Central to capture that feedback and and changes that we would need to assess and and make before including them in this assessment. So it would have to be done separately. But that's that's an approach.
Thank you. And just to clarify the the timing you're envisioning.
So the challenge with the with the timing that we have on complete streets specifically is that we have a grant and we have a deadline, February twenty twenty-four. So but what we can do is do a separate assessment and and leave that sort of complete street element to play out as part of a North Central-focused study. That would probably come after.
Thank you. That's my main question at this time.
Thank you very much, Sue Ellen and everyone. It's been a long time coming. And I wish we could go back a year and give ourselves more time, but we are here. So many of my questions or comments too, so I will try and split them apart. You said at one point that the focus was on residents, but also businesses, small businesses are going to be a major component of this, yes?
Yes, as part of the outreach effort.
Great. Okay, then I guess following on Councilmember Lorraine's question, I understand why from a timing perspective, you can take a deep deeper dive in North Central separately. But I'm very concerned that the learnings from the experience in North Central guide and educate our outreach plans across the city. And I think the two, this is the two that are. I guess my question to you is, how do you, when you're doing community outreach, how do you plan to both tell people the bigger picture, but then at the same time go down very deeply to their own personal experience? Here's how it's it could impact you. And then thirdly, how do we get out early enough in front of all this? Because I think a lot of the challenges I've heard is was tremendous amount of outreach done, but it was the timing and that got in the way of a lot of of hearing from the community and coming to a resolution earlier rather than later.
I'll do my best to address all of those. I apologize. A little late, so I apologize if I missed anything. And I can start off and then Azelia can fill in if I need. And I think that there were a lot of lessons that we learned during and coming out of the North Central project. And that was a focus on taking those lessons and applying those to the community engagement process for this project and also for others that we're doing. We have an excellent community engagement firm that is actually, Carrie is part of Fair and Peers, but Winter Consulting is our subconsultant who is helping us with the community engagement effort. And they really excel in reaching out to communities that have not historically participated in outreach and gaining feedback and gaining input into the plan. And so something that we have modified going into this effort is that phased approach to outreach that Carrie went over. The first phase is really about the listening, the stakeholder interviews, getting the lived experience feedback and starting off with a base of listening and then going into the active engagement efforts. So we are working to incorporate those lessons learned as we move forward. And in terms of getting out ahead, we did do quite a lot of community engagement, but as you noted, the the timeline was a little compressed for the North Central project. And I think that that's something that's also a lesson that we've learned in doing the pre, pre-project design and evaluating what community changes may be necessary or potentially needed as a part of a design. And this is not just for this project, but for any roadway project that we're doing. Doing that evaluation early on in the process so that we can tailor the community engagement that's needed. And that's something that we've started doing for our pavement management projects where we're integrating pedestrian and bicycle projects at the same time, is really identifying Is really identifying what those impacts are early on so that we can get ahead of it. Because I I want to assure that that we have learned quite a lot from that project and we are actively applying it.
Great. And I'm sure you will continue to learn. And I really appreciate all the groups that you identified in terms of who you want to reach out to. But I just want to make sure that is not the only list. Because there are parents with young kids, there are neighborhoods that are going to be impacted. There are drivers, right? I mean, there it's important to get to all the people we haven't spoken to. But that just means the universe has to be bigger. So I just want to make sure that that's. Part of the plan.
Correct. That's not an exhaustive list. Those are the target audiences. Because they're the ones that we typically don't hear from. But we are including school districts in our outreach so that we can try to engage with the families with the younger children. And we got some comments from the Sustainability and Infrastructure Commissions about reaching out through youth sports. Or preschools or that. Type of organization in order to engage more with the families. And you'll notice that the roadway network is one of those networks that we're layering because driving is a mode of transportation and it will continue to be a mode of transportation. This is not a bike and pedestrian plan. This is a multimodal plan that brings all of the different modes together. So we are looking for people who take transit. Who drive, who bike, who walk to get all of their input. So. The list that was shared is. The target. Audiences that we're that we're trying to specifically reach out to, but we are doing general engagement to get the full feedback.
But. Drivers and neighbors neighborhoods need to be target audiences as well, like with every. Every outreach. I think it's just really important. I also looked at your schedule. And I saw that stakeholder interviews were in March. And I'm seeing that we are March 20. And I'm wondering how you think you're going to get that done. God bless you if you can.
We had, we did push the schedule back slightly. In order to do commission and council meetings in March instead of the original target, which was February. To allow additional time for preparation. So the stakeholder interviews would be starting after we get. Input from the council to add together with the commission feedback and the public feedback. And update the draft community engagement plan.
Okay, so it started in April.
Yes.
Okay, I'd love to see an updated schedule of that. And then also, given the fact that, I mean, you're talking about a lot of iterative action, you get feedback, you act, you get feedback, you act. If let's say one of the groups you talked to in the stakeholder group now. And you get their needs and you go further down into the project. If I remember, the schedule was more general, the later it went, there was, you know, general feedback in the survey and all that, but. Do you have plans to go back to those original stakeholders? Once you're fairly far down the path and say, okay, you gave us this feedback. We've come up with this. What are you thinking about what we've done? Because I my concern would be if you don't do that, then you wind up with those stakeholders having a certain idea. And then you wind up doing something else, which might be very good and surprising.
Understood. I think I'll ask Carrie to respond to that.
Yeah, that's a good question. We want to make sure that there's continuity in the process as you're highlighting. So there's a couple of different ways that we can do that. Again, we have kind of a a lot of those stakeholder interviews will occur in that phase first phase. We could kind of repeat some of those down the road and into those later phases. So people can see. At that point, what those recommendations would be. The other thing that we can do is kind of a baseline approach is making sure that those participants are kind of notified of the other kind of in-person opportunities to participate. So whether that's the workshop or the pop up events or or the online. Engagement, all of those will be kind of equivalent opportunities to participate and they could provide that feedback in any of those different formats.
But just to be thoughtful about that. Then also, how are you thinking about? And this is not just. Older people or seniors, but what about people who don't spend a lot of time online? You know, that that don't get their updates from social media, who don't do online surveys? How do we think about them?
And we do have a varied outreach approach for. For varied activities. So there's in-person activities and there would be virtual activities. But also in terms of getting the word out about those efforts. We've done the decals that I mentioned before we have done those for events. And we have leveraged newspaper articles in the our newspaper as in the past. Posters are always an option. We do go out through all of the city's communication channels, which does include the e-newsletter. If people use email, but they're not on social media, for example. So we would outreach in ways that we can meet all of those audiences and also when we. Typically, when we have an engagement activity that's more broad. Or even even one that's geographically limited, we do engage with the Neighborhood Association. For either that location or for the citywide, we reach as many as we have contact information for. And they do have methods to reach their communities and their members. So we we do try to get the word out as broadly as we can.
Great. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Hedges, do you have any questions?
I will tell you as usual, Ms. Nash is.
Sorry, do you mind holding? We have to turn the volume up.
What are we doing?
Please go ahead.
Thank you. As usual, Ms. Nash has asked. Questions that I didn't think about and some of those that I did. Very good job. The one question that I have remaining. Is have you really considered? Measurements of all of the streets, including Delaware and Norfolk. That would allow a road diet. So that you could. Do a bike lane inside the car parking. And I'll I'll go further with that when we're when we're talking about other things.
Central Bike Network? Or for the for looking at roadway widths throughout the city?
The Bike Network. Sorry, I didn't preface.
Okay. Thank you. That took a village. And I would. If if you wouldn't mind speaking up?
Yeah, so feasibility, things like that. So when we say feasibility, we're saying, how do we understand that? An idea or recommendation for a street would actually make sense or would actually fit and could be feasible. In that way. So we will be looking at things like street widths, for example, as part of this project. And that's something that we want to take into consideration to make sure that you you all can understand just how implementable are some of these projects? There may be things that you'd love to do that are more visionary. That are already again included in those other plans that you all have already adopted. And then there may be some ideas that could be more nimble or kind of quickly done within the existing right of way constraints that you all have. So we'll see a mix of both and that'll be something that'll be considered.
One other question. That I thought of while we're.
Councilmember Hedges, do you mind repeating your question again? So every time we we have to lower your volume and then increase the volume. So if you don't mind repeating it again.
I don't mind. I'm coasting with this. No problem. So. The the follow up question I have is I've been in communities that use scrambles. They're safer. Than regular intersections for pedestrians and automobile drivers and bicyclists. And there are some areas in San Mateo I consider that scrambles would work well, especially around train stations in the city. Have as is the city looking at anything like that to to push traffic through faster, make it safer for pedestrians and bicycles?
And we, as part of the multimodal network, we would be looking at intersections. Which may include treatments like complete protected intersections. Or pedestrian and bike scrambles, different ways to connect across the intersection.
Thank you. I feel good about that.
Did you have any other questions, Councilmember Hedges?
No, I think Councilmember Nash asked. Everything I ever wanted to ask.
Councilmember Newsom, please.
Thank you. I just have a few questions. I heard some of the groups that you're outreach outreaching to, and I just want to make sure that these are included. Churches, temples, community buildings. Do we have that already on the list? Yes. Delivery companies such as Amazon, FedEx. DoorDash. Because a lot of them are what are double parking on our streets and adding to it. And a lot of them locally have regional distribution and managers who have a lot of feedback on. On where they're delivering to, and that's a great resource to tap for free information. And then home businesses that have small business licenses. I walked a lot of North Central on Friday, Friday night. And there's a lot of lot of neighborhood gardeners and people who have many vehicles that they're trying to locate somewhere. So I would suggest, you know, maybe that's driving the road and just finding them after six o'clock at night. But also looking to see if they have small business licenses that are registered in in the areas that we're looking at. I also think, you know, I hear what you're saying that we're we're not going to be able to apply these changes immediately to the North Central Bike Lane Project. But I would strongly urge you to to make sure we do a lot of outreach to that community. To find out what their concerns are and learn the lessons, which I hear we're going to do, but I just want to record as saying, I think that's very important that we. Learn from learn from the mistakes and and figure out how to do it even better for the next one. And then. That's that's really it. There was a question that was brought up with with North Central about red zones. So there's a lot of extended red zones on corners in North Central. And I don't know if the the regulations have changed or the laws have changed, but. I can tell you just going, you know, one neighborhood south in Central and to sunny break. We don't have nearly that amount of red. And so. When you're taking, you know, 20% or 10% of a community's parking, it's important that we're figuring out how to minimize the. The the removal of additional parking by doubling and tripling our red zones.
Understood. And the extended red zones were a specific request for site distance improvements at the intersections. And but if we are doing a separate North Central circulation plan, that is something that we can include in that.
That's all the feedback and questions I have. Thank you.
Thank you. I I guess I was wondering, just in terms of the methodology of of complete streets, which by the way, I think is a really important direction for us to go in. I think that siloed analysis is has to be a thing of the past. It it's clearly not working and it absolutely did not work in North Central. So I guess what I'm curious, are we looking at? Or factoring in the width of streets and also layering in population density, for example? Are we looking at speed zones? And proximity to commercial areas? Like for me, looking at, you know, taking a complete streets approach. Means that we're actually factoring in a lot of the, you know, the the circulation parking demands. We're looking at population concentrations. We're looking at commercial concentrations. We're not just looking at, you know, you know. Where we want to go take, you know, take a bike ride, right? Or walk across the street safely, which is obviously really important. But I think that like I I want to better understand, are those are those things also factored in? To the methodology?
Yeah, those are good questions and good preview for future presentations to you all on that topic. But some of some of the things that you did see in tonight's presentation that kind of lay out some of that foundation. An emphasis both on safety. So with the general plan policies, you're you're looking at Vision Zero, for example. So really making sure that you're. You have a set of projects and networks that are committed to safety to reduce killed and severe injury collisions for all modes across the city. So that was a really kind of high factor. So we're looking at some specific speed information, for example. With the existing conditions, things like actually. Looking at where you have higher speed differentials, which can be a main way in which that. Can kind of increase the likelihood of a crash resulting in killed or severe injury collision. And then we're also looking at different kind of proximity and access to them within different equity priority communities as. As part of that as well. So we could look at things like population density as well. That's helpful to know that that's an area of interest. The reason that we have prioritized safety is just kind of thinking that we want a safe system on the whole. And so population density may be important when you think about implementation, but you want those safe pieces everywhere in your system. And have that redundancy in the network. So that's why that was kind of emphasized in the presentation thus far.
Yeah, and I appreciate that, but I think that one like, you know, the one of the the disconnects of the of implementing the bicycle master plan, which she didn't take into account. Neighborhood level context, didn't take into account population density, didn't take into account the width of the of the sidewalks. And and the streets. That there were a lot of, you know, contextual factors that didn't, you know, just were not part of. The the in-depth analysis that I think needed to be had when we're looking at trade offs. And approving the bicycle master plan. And then down the road where it was approved and then the ball was in motion and then and then providing community input on something that was already approved. Right? And and that set us on the course of, you know, approving a project, which I did not vote for, but approving the previous council. Approved a project with which the community largely through our own community input process driven by the city did not support. And still move forward with it. So I think, you know, for me, contact, you know, surrounding contextual factors. Are are really pertinent part of the project and analysis space. And then the other thing that I think is really important, I was glad to hear Councilmember Newsom bring up the, you know, the question. The questions about, you know, capturing sort of sole proprietors. We have a lot of small business owners in the city, small business operators in the city that that do require work trucks. That create demands, unique demands on parking. And and then the other stakeholder group that I didn't see. At least in the slides, and maybe I missed it in the in the pocket was. Was following ADA accessibility as a use case and specifically looking at senior. The nexus of senior, senior mobility and senior ADA needs. Because I think that, you know, while we want, you know, a lot of the the thinking on creating a an age friendly city. Focused on walkability for seniors, which I think is, you know, really important. But at a certain point, if we're talking about a full lifespan and aging in place, we're talking about people that will. It at some point be homebound and require care providers coming to their homes, right? Which create parking demands. Right? Which ready wheels that need to, you know, need to need to get to those homes to deliver meals, right? And services. So those are, you know, those are for me really important. Lenses to apply when we're looking at age friendly cities and we're looking at, you know, use cases and and stakeholder. Identify, you know, identifying specific stakeholder groups. And we had, we know that our senior population is is going to double, right? In the next, was it 20 years? And they're already a significant portion of the population. So the the demands and the needs of our senior population are very, very acute. And if we're not planning for them by looking through the lens of our seniors. And and what's on the horizon when they are homebound and the parking requirements that will be required. The circulation and and driving requirements that will be required to to support our senior population, I think is really, really important. The other thing I would say that, and I know that you are talking about, or you are looking at faith organizations. But I would specifically. Note that a lot of. Like that there are. Sort of. Parking drivers or parking generators that are very specific to specific times. That actually we don't plan for, you know, in. And I think in an appropriate way, we're not matching our parking and zoning. Plans around some of those specific drivers. So, you know, there are other models where, you know, on Sunday between, you know, 10 and 12. You can double park in certain areas like those those models exist and haven't been implemented in in the city of San Mateo. And I, you know, I just wonder if those are some of the considerations that we can look at. You know, we lost the oldest black church in in our history in San Mateo when pilgrim Baptists moved across the bay. Because of diminishing population in our black community and, you know, and I don't want to see that continue to happen where we lose our faith organizations. You know, to, you know, because because there, you know, they their population in their community is not supported in in San Mateo. Right? That it's a travesty. And and we're not planning for. And, um, and we're not planning for them to stay when, when we're not providing people that are attending church, attending services, um, and a real viable option to actually get to their place of worship. So, um, so that's a question and a thought. Um, you know, I, I, I think, I, I think that for the, before we open it up for a public comment, I think, you know, a lot of folks are here from, from North Central who, you know, it's really, I, I appreciate, I appreciate the, the sentiment and the foundation of this presentation being about rebuilding trust. Right? And I think that the question about how we go about rebuilding trust, it needs to start with, how are we going to, um, how, how are we going to give North Central the attention it deserves? And that to me is a central question of this conversation. Um, is like, what is going to happen with, um, you know, with the resources and the time and the analysis that North Central really, our neighborhood really needs to, um, you know, to repair the trust that was lost and redesign, um, the streets in a way that will, will really make sense and meet the needs of the community. Um, and, uh, and that means that like taking a much harder look at the bike lanes, um, that were implemented. So, you know, that for me is absolutely on the table. Um, and I think it deserves conversation. It deserves conversation tonight. Um, and, um, and so we're not at the comment period. Um, but I, but I think that I would like, as folks speak to us, you know, for their, for us there to be an acknowledgement that there is a, there is a very real ask in the room tonight. Um, and I don't want that to go on deaf ears. That's, that's got to be in the past. We got to hear the voices of North Central and be responsive to the needs of North Central. That was expressed very clearly during the bicycle, during the bike, uh, lane project. And was not, it was said, it was not heard. Um, so I, I really want that to be very clear in this conversation that we're, we're here to actually raise that, that, or I'm here to raise that to the surface as something that we're ready to talk about as a council, whether, you know, in the ways that it might fit into this, you know, this effort, but also, you know, if it deserves additional, um, and, you know, a dedicated study session, a dedicated, you know, agenda item, then, um, I'm here ready to have that conversation. So with that, we'll open it up for public comment.
Thank you. We are, we've reached the public comment period for this item. I'm looking for yellow speaker slips for anyone who would like to, uh, speak to this item in person. Accounting for any individuals who are currently in conference room A and would like to speak on this item, please come to conference room C and submit your yellow speaker slip. Uh, if you're participating via Zoom, please use the raise your hand function. And currently I have. Yes, you can. Madam Mayor, we have 15 comments currently and no further comments to be expected from conference room A. Look to console to set the time for public comment.
Is it? Is it 20, 20 and above is one minute? And so we're at two minutes each? Okay.
We'll set the time at two minutes.
Yes, please.
Yep. So we'll begin with comments submitted in person. Uh, if you hear a name, we're going to call the next three speakers. Please form and align behind the, uh, podium and we will go in order that these comments were received. The first speaker will be Eliza Kioa, followed by Joanne Bennett and Olivia Ferris. If you please make your way to the podium.
Along the comment or um, what the mayor had said, I, which I totally agree with. The bike lane in San Mateo went without consideration to the, what the community, actual North Central community uh, were thinking or considering as far as their living situation. Um, therefore I've come to the consideration to the uh, thinking that the funding was inappropriately misused to be used in San Mateo Central for a bike lanes that once maybe I would see a bike rider once a week or two in a month. So how does that make any sense? Money being used for something that's not being used. So, um, and I really think that you guys really need to, and I, I, I come to the thinking that sometimes we have board members here that are making decision for areas without accountable or accountability to it. You're making decision without really consideration what's the fact or what's going on. So I'm asking you, uh, North Central, I've lived here for 50, over 50 years. And to think that's North Central is probably the only area in the country that still buses the children out of the area for schooling, elementary schooling. That sounds racist. That we're still busing these kids. We came from the island 1969. We were bussed out of, our kids were attending Lawrence School. And I think majority of you here probably don't even know where Lawrence School was at. So please, kids are still being bussed out.
Thank you, Mayor Lee and council members. Um, I'm a lifelong North Central resident. My parents bought their house on the 900 block of North Idaho back in 1960. Uh, I still live on North Idaho on 800 block. Um, it has been well-known for years that North Central has had a parking, parking issues. I mean, it has not been a secret. So about a little over a year ago, when I got the little flyer in the mail saying that it over 200 space, parking spaces were going to be eliminated. I mean, of all the neighborhoods in San Mateo, North Central is not, we cannot afford to lose parking. Um, another thing is speeding. I mean, my daughter lives in San Francisco. They put speed bumps in her neighborhood. I've seen speed bumps up the street in Burlingame. I've seen speed bumps being put in, in Redwood City in my son's neighborhood. But I don't, I, I have hard, I don't, I can't think of a neighborhood, maybe on Claremont, where I've seen speed bumps being installed. Um, over 10 years ago, when the peninsula overpass was constructed, the previous overpass had a walkway, a pedestrian walkway underneath it. Well, I requested, why can't that be replaced? Well, we got some lame ass excuse. And today, what do we have? We have dirt. I mean, about right after Christmas, uh, dirt from a street, street construction somewhere was just being dumped underneath there. So I feel like, you know, um, if they did that in 1946 to put, to think about putting a walkway, why can't we do it in 2023? So, um, instead of it being just dirt and people walking underneath it to get to the other side, to get to their parked car. So anyway, thank you for letting me speak. Thank you.
Hi, the first one is say ditto to everything the mayor said. Our neighborhood, I don't think was canvassed enough to see how the bike lane would impact the neighborhood. The bike lane, I live on Humboldt. Our bike lane is twice as wide as the bike lane in Burlingame. And in Burlingame, there's a bike lane on both sides of the street and you can park on both sides of the street. And in my neighborhood, most everyone there, they're working families. When they first put out the information for the bike lane, it was only in English. What about all the people that don't speak English? It's, um, the bike lane has almost made me a prisoner in my own house after a certain time of day because, um, I have a big house. There's a, we have cars. So if you leave after a certain time, you can't get a park. One night I came home, it was around 12:30. I had to park almost four blocks away. A man was following me until I started running, you know? At my age, I think that's a bit much. As the lady said, we had a parking problem even before the bike lane. So, um, I just think that it's unfair that a lot of things were considered. People weren't asked. They said they were going to do surveys. They said that there was, on one of the meetings I went to, they said that there was going to be plenty of parking in the area. It's not. One last thing, during Christmas, I'm the matriarch in my family. I had my annual Christmas party. I had to pay two people to shuttle people. I had 46 guests. They can't carry dishes and drag their kids three or four blocks away. You're welcome.
My name is Luella Parker. And I will say, I appreciate the mayor, my respect to the mayor and to the city council, to the secretary and the attorney general and all that's participating tonight. I don't live here in San Mateo, but I attend church here in San Mateo for over 40 some years, right on the corner of Tilton and Claremont. And I've seen a lot of changes since I've been, I drive 14 miles up here. Since the pandemic, we only have church service uh, twice a month, the first Sunday and the third Sunday. And now, I guess back in the day, it, it wasn't this many people in San Mateo. But now it's no parking and they have painted the sidewalks, the side red. Well, I didn't pay attention to that, uh, the first Sunday in February. And so I got a ticket, $46. We were only there about two and a half hours. We come in at 10 and we usually leave around 12:30 when the ticket was written about 11. So we was almost to be dismissed. But it, it broke my heart because where, where are we supposed to park? There's no park. We, our church is only senior peoples mostly. There's a few youngsters there, but mostly seniors. And one time I had to drive all around on Delaware, all around two or three times trying to find a park. So I was just devastated when I got a ticket and we trying to serve the Lord and do good in the community, helping people. We have a, a feeding program there, nowhere to park. But on Sundays, it's, it's devastating to me. Well, I, I wrote a letter to the city of whom it may concern. And that letter got around. It went to the public works department. They didn't know what, why they got the ticket. And his name is Tom, Tom Williams. He was a very nice man. And he understood my feelings and how I felt. And he was going to make sure that he get that letter to the right person. And he did. I know he did. And then another Tom came on the next few days. And he was a German guy. He didn't tell me his last name because he said it was too long. And, uh, but he just told me he was Tom. What? Well, well, I'm just here. Yeah, I, I understood you very well, mayor, what you were saying. You said the sentiments of my heart.
Hi, everybody. Um, my name is Jesus. Uh, my English is not too good. Okay. I'm living in Humboldt and the bike lines affected to, to me and probably to a lot of neighbors. Because I don't know if you, you see the street, the Humboldt street is duplex or triplex? It's three families. It's my wife and me need the car for, because window work next to the house, probably two blocks. We work half an hour back. And the other family, same problem. We have a space for four cars. We're parking the other two cars. I work on the construction and if you park in two, three, five blocks, this is a problem for me because I stole my, my tools and who pay me? My pocket need paying. And that's our problem. And the other things, I have my kids and the last month, my, my daughter is saying, that's my worry. Okay, can you, my family come, friends? Okay, we think if the family come, everybody have the cars, we're parking. You went to park and then five blocks or 10 blocks? It's not possible. I told my daughters, nobody for you, buddy. Because no, not window, how parking for our family? And especially that one, the, a problem for our parking. Because remove it and the other thing, we open the window. Any vehicles going to the street for one years, probably one, two, and not too many by, by.
Hello. I see a lot of my neighbors from my same block in Humboldt, right over here and right there and other places in the room. I spoke in favor of the bike lanes. I've been a passionate advocate for them on Nextdoor. But I'm not here to say, don't change things. I am here to say, and this is to inform the Safe Streets Program, is you've got to go much, much deeper and you have to get out ahead of the problem. When the vote was taken on the bike lanes, last time we had grant money and other reasons why a, a contract that had to be let. And so at the last minute, the council voted three to two. It could have gone either way, as I recall, because we were under time pressure because we weren't out ahead of it. And since the bike lanes were put in, we were promised we would hear about a parking permit program. We were told that creative work would be done to find alternatives, um, for people to park. We will, we were told that policies would be looked at. None of that has happened. We heard about the King Center opening its lot, but we haven't heard a peep out of the rest of it. You've got to go deep on policies. We have the LAZ parking guys. You never see them in our neighborhood except for our person who got that parking ticket on the day that she was at church. We have to go deep on policy. We say we can't mark parking stalls on our streets so that we don't pit neighbors against each other. The people across the street from me, um, park one car and The people across the street from me, um, park one car in two spots and they can get away with it because we don't mark the stalls. Well, that little space can hold two cars, but maybe not to the old antique standard of twenty feet. You've got to go deep in these policies if you're gonna have both things that we need. We need safe streets for bicyclists and for pedestrians. I do see bicyclists. I see them all day long. Kids going to school, day laborers going to work, people on scooters. We gotta have both things, but you can't do it with shallow, uncreative thinking. And that's what I'm here to advocate for. I was for the bike lanes, but we gotta do a lot better than this. Thank you.
All right. I thank you too for letting me have this say. I'm also a member of Macedonia Church. I've been at that church for over forty-five years and I am the director of the outreach program. I feed more than three hundred and thirty families every Tuesday. If you don't believe me, come by in the morning around eight o'clock. You'll see the people are wrapped around the corner trying to get this food. And they have taken away from those four corners because we're on the corner of Claremont and Tilton. At least sixteen parking, anywhere from twelve to sixteen people could park there. Now there is no parking at all. The day Mother Parker got her ticket, five of our members got a ticket on the same day. This is ridiculous. We've had, been out there like on a Tuesday and they don't come every Tuesday. But when they do show up, they give everybody a ticket that they can find and they ticketed like all of our people. We have women who are pregnant, babies on their backs, dragging them along by their hand to pick up food with shopping carts, to take them home. They need the food for their children. That's why we're there on that corner. We provide food, diapers, cleaning products, anything we can get, we give away to those ladies to help them take care of their children. We need assistance so that they can park. Because some of them walk four and five blocks and take, you know, park their car, bring the kids around because you can't leave the kids in the car. And, um, I just want to make that plain. We need help to be able to park on that corner as much as possible. Not only during church services, but especially on those days when it's raining, they're standing out in the rain. I've opened our church. We let them come in because there's no other way to do this. There's one thing I've heard a lot about. We're gonna notify you. We're gonna let you know. We will put you in the plan. Nobody sent anything to the church. Nobody said anything to the church. I was not notified. I came out one day, one Tuesday, and they were painting my street red at that point already. What could we do? Now, just one more thing and I'm gonna leave. You said that you gotta spend this money by February twenty-third and then you're gonna go back and address the bicycle problem, the red light problem. That's too late. We need something done now about the parking and about the bicycle lane.
Good evening. Thank, um, council members and Mayor Lee. Um, my name is Trina. Um, and I was sitting here listening. I wasn't gonna say anything at first because you guys have heard me so much. But then when I heard her say money, when we first got involved with the bike lane, it was like they had to use the money before a certain time. That just really teed me off. We're people. We understand money needs to be used, but it was, kept saying that if they didn't use the money, they would lose it. Well, we've lost so much already. I haven't lost because I have a huge park, I have two parking spaces and one is long. But I was raised here. I had a very sick son. These seniors took care of me. They came to the hospital, gave me food. So now I'm trying to pay them back for what they did for me. And it's just ridiculous. They don't leave their homes. Because there's just nowhere for them to park, you know? And then when I heard about the aid, a disability thing, when they said they're gonna give them a place at the end of the corner, I'm like, you've got to be kidding me. They can't walk to their front yard. How are they gonna walk to the corner? So these things are just really bad and it's all about the money. Everywhere you go, it's about money. Instead of thinking about people. So here we are back at money again. And you guys are gonna move forward instead of fixing what you've already messed up in North Central. Please fix us first before you carry it on. It's just not right. North Central is the only place you took that many parking spaces away. And we said that at one of the meetings. One of the girls, Claire, said, you know, where else have you removed parking? And they said such area and they go. And she said all of five because she had researched that. Those are the most they moved, five. You could have moved five in our area. We wouldn't have said anything. But over two hundred and then you keep paying red. But it's just about the money and I, I'm glad to hear you say that you, um, are learning from the mistakes, but you can't learn from mistakes and keep going. Fix them the problems here first. Thank you guys very much.
Thank you. So I wasn't gonna say anything because I think that both Trina and I have said plenty. We've written letters and we've voiced our concern to several of our council members, but I could not just sit there. All I want to say is if you haven't been to North Central, please take a tour with one of us between five and six in the evening. It's daylight savings time now. So you don't have to worry about it getting dark. You need to see what's happening if you haven't already. Secondly, to the staff, I hope you will listen to the community this time. I really hope that you will seriously listen to us. It's important. We have been, many of us have been in the community almost all our lives and it's just important for you to not move ahead without listening to us. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker participating via Zoom will be Mike Caggianno. Mike, please unmute your mic.
Okay, thank you. Uh, yeah, I was looking at a couple of things that were done that seemed like a good idea at the time. Like traffic calming, ball bouts turned out to be more dysfunctional than anything else. Like it's, uh, I don't know if you're familiar, you might, I'm sure some of these people know what a ball bout is. But, uh, it forces bikers to go and have to share a lane with an active, uh, lane of traffic because it's narrowed near the corner. The concept was to slow traffic down. Well, most of them have, uh, traffic calming in this form of stop signs. So that there's not that much, uh, need for something like that. But I think unfortunately, you're gonna have to undo some of this stuff that money has been spent to do and it's become dysfunctional. Like people are damaging their cars. You go on a cold, uh, dark rainy night and you may not realize it's there. And then you're up on that curb and damaging your tire. That, that would be one item that hasn't been mentioned. Another is, uh, I'm thinking the entire North Central, all the side streets could be considered, uh, converted to one way. I think that would give the, the community much more breathing room. They might not have to park over the curbs or on the sidewalks quite so much. I just think it would be for traffic flow going one way with every single street, with the exception of the arterials, you know, the Humboldt and Delaware and, uh, Sematio Drive. But other than that, if every single street was one way, I honestly think it would be a much, much safer place for anyone with a bike because they have to share the road because they don't live on the arterials. If they live on the side streets, you've got to take your bike down a side street. I'll leave it with that. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Megan Strain. Megan, please unmute your mic.
Good evening, everyone. Um, my name is Megan Strain and I'm a resident of San Mateo and also part of the San Mateo Climate Action Team. I'm very proud to live in our city and that we are prioritizing, prioritizing complete and sustainable streets for everyone. Cyclists, pedestrians and drivers, people of all ages and all abilities. Um, and when done thoughtfully, um, complete streets can be a tool to ensure present safety as well as support our fight against climate change as biking and walking become more safe. Reasonable alternatives to having just a single occupancy vehicle going around, emitting greenhouse gases. Because that becomes more realistic. Because both my partner and I bike to work in other places. Um, it's also very personal to me to have safe streets that we can walk in and we can bike in to get to where we need to go locally and get to work. Um, we've had near accidents as cars zoom by us when we're in, um, when we're in a car lane essentially because that's where, that's the only place we can go. Um, so that's very, very scary. So I, I urge you to put a lot of thought into the way that we implement complete streets here in San Mateo. I'm in North Central, so I hear you guys. And while I don't have to drive too much on those particular streets, I do think it's extremely important to make sure we do it right this time. And I urge you to advance the proposals, um, that rebalance the budget to match the city's vision so we can implement those plans for infrastructure changes. Um, thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Sean Laxson. Sean, please unmute your mic.
Good evening, city council. Um, just based off of some of the things we've heard tonight, I, I think this really just emphasizes the need to design our streets around all users, whether they are drivers or cyclists or pedestrians. I think one of the, one of the things that, you know, I've seen from community engagement, I think we can redirect some of the resources that have been used in the past towards how do we incentivize folks whose voices have not been heard in the community to contribute their thoughts to our street designs? Incentivized through paid childcare, provide transportation to these venues, you know, even gift cards. Because I think there's a big cross-section of the community that's not being heard with the approach that the city is taking with its, uh, community outreach. You know, personally, using the existing bike network around the city, which includes the Humboldt and Poplar bike lanes. I think there's, there's a lot of potential with the narrow streets to convert these streets to one ways echoing, uh, previous commenter. This is from my own experience, you know, living in other cities that have narrow streets. Using one ways allows you to keep more parking and it allows you to also yield more space for wider sidewalks for pedestrians, more space for cyclists through bike lanes protected or through painted lanes. And it just really creates a better mobility network for everyone where people don't feel like they have to necessarily drive if they don't want to. Our children and see, our children can walk to school. Our seniors can move around the neighborhood. And, um, I'm sorry, I'm starting to ramble, so I will, I will leave things off there. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And our next speaker will be Jess. Jess, please unmute your mic.
Good evening. My name is Jessica Manzi. I'm a resident of the Beresford neighborhood. I'd like to thank staff for bringing this item to the city council and the community at large. The Complete Streets Plan is our opportunity to ensure that we're planning for the mobility needs of all residents, regardless of their age or ability or how they choose to travel. As a parent of two teenagers, I see on a daily basis how our streets aren't meeting their evolving needs. For every school that they have attended, whether elementary, middle or high school, there are simply too many people driving their kids to school. For every additional parent driving their child to school, it makes it less safe for kids to walk or ride a bike, creating a vicious cycle where children aren't allowed to walk or bike to school because it isn't safe. I don't raise this to lay blame on the schools or city staff, but instead to highlight that we as a community need better infrastructure for non-driving trips. And equally important, we need a culture shift to encourage, encourage more trips being made by non-driving modes for those who are able. Regarding the outreach plan as presented tonight, I appreciate that it's targeting input from those who are traditionally underrepresented in community planning efforts using a variety of outreach techniques. At the beginning of the presentation, you highlighted education as an educate, as an engagement goal. I imagine that you will incorporate education into each of our engagement activities, but it is worth reiterating this in the plan if it isn't already. I would also encourage the use of fun, short videos on social media as a form of education that better connects with younger residents in the community. Thank you and I look forward to hearing more as these efforts roll out.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Bry Myers. Bry, please unmute your mic.
Thank you, uh, council members, uh, for allowing me the time to talk. Uh, my name is Bry Myers. I live in Nineteenth Avenue and my family walks scooters and bikes several times a day around our neighborhood to schools, Sunny Bray, Trader Joe's, Safeway, nearby parks and downtown. For the Complete Streets Plan, I ask the council and city to please prioritize designing the streets and sidewalks for all users with additional emphasis on active transport. On Delaware, we have added over seven hundred more housing units between Station Park Green and the Zara apartment buildings. And I see a lot more pedestrian traffic. I see this as I'm outside of my car, walking, biking and observing. Neighbors are out walking, scootering, biking their kids to local parks, preschools, daycares, commuting to work, walking their dogs and walking to the nearby businesses. As you know, bike lanes aren't only used by cyclists. They're also used by residents on electric scooters, runners, walkers and even the occasional dog walker trying to avoid close proximity to another dog. This sidewalk often becomes too busy at different times of the day, maybe morning commutes during school, uh, morning workouts and evening commutes. And many individuals will move into the bike lane to alleviate the congestion on the sidewalk. Shifting to road maintenance, as maintaining roads is very expensive, it's important the city make the best use of the road by prioritizing using the road space for transportation for all modes and not only driving cars and parking for vehicles. And regarding street parking, many neighbors do not utilize their driveways for working vehicles. My sons have recently taken an interest in license plate registration tags. They are motivated to go for a walk and find the most outdated registration tag. Surprisingly, many streets have vehicles in their driveways that have registration tags from twenty eighteen, fifteen and fourteen. And these vehicles are obviously not moving by their permanent flat tires. Perhaps these vehicles hold sentimental value. However, year after year, they remain parked, unmoving in driveways and residents rely on available street parking instead of using their own driveway. While we don't want to tell neighbors how to use their own private driveway, it's worth surveying areas to see how many driveways are underutilized by these permanently parked cars. We have a number of residents in San Mateo who do not own cars, cannot afford cars and do not, are not old enough to drive. They too need to commute to school, work. Thank you.
Thank you. And our next speaker will be Rick Sekuda. Rick, please unmute your mic.
Uh, good evening. I was here for the, uh, stormwater tax, but I own three bicycles, a mobility scooter and we're also caregivers to seniors. And I saw this slideshow, uh, that was concerning. But also, uh, I think what I saw early on is that each council member and every, uh, one of the early speakers brought up the issue of North Central. So there's obviously something going on there and this issue must be resolved before moving forward and making the same mistakes over and over where it would be costly to remediate. I drive through North Central to see my dentist, unfortunately, and I've never seen anyone on a bicycle on Humboldt. It sounds to me like there was a total disregard for the North Central community. Mayor Lee passionately brought up a whole host of issues and I feel like staff is insensitive and trying to rush this project through and that could be disastrous. I think the plan is also disrespectful to certain groups and just seems to be exclusively bicycle-centric. Since I own bicycles, I don't mind that, but I think this, the streets need to be for everybody. But more than anyone, seniors and disabled need access to vehicles. This is concerning to me and I can't see how this rebuilds trust. So I'd urge you to reconsider the Humboldt issue first before moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be David Hunt. David, please unmute your mic.
Oh, good evening. Thanks for the great presentation by city staff and the comments so far. I should have two comments to add. I think for feedback, it would be great to explore pop-up or quick build infrastructure events. Currently, there is no protected bike lane in San Mateo for people to experience. And it would be interesting to have some of those events so people could try out and get a feel for what things, um, look like on the ground when they're on a bike, when they're in a car, um, rather than just looking at posters or slides. So if that can be considered, that, that would be great. Like the feel of protected bike lane with concrete or bollards can be kind of different than parking protected and it'd be nice for people to have an opportunity to experience that throughout these events. Um, and then the last point is, um, over the past roughly year or so, I've helped organize four events where we've engaged with volunteers to fix close to two hundred bikes for free for San Mateo residents. Two of those events have been Martin Luther King Park in North Central and two in Central Park near downtown. It's been really Um, it's been really informative to connect with folks that come to those events. It's a interesting subset of residents that. Show up, uh, different groups at the different events. To put briefly, I've learned a lot in connecting with people there and it'd be great. Um, I'd love to share the opportunity if city staff or consultants want to join. Uh, we're planning events for the summer and uh, might be a good opportunity to connect with a different part of the community. Alright, thanks for taking my comments.
Thank you. And our next speaker will be Mike Swire. Mike, please unmute your mic.
Great. Uh, thanks so much, uh, Mayor Lee and members of the city council. Um, I'm calling today to thank the city. For its commitment to making the streets of San Mateo safe for all users, especially around schools and especially for the vulnerable users on foot and bike. A year ago, the city made a major step forward in this direction by installing two plus miles of bike lanes around San Mateo. High School and College Park Elementary on Poplar and Humboldt. I'm the proud parent of two bear, bear cats and thus frequently on both these roads. Since the installation of the bike lanes, I've seen an increase in the number of students in the bike lanes and the number of bikes on campus. This means healthier and smarter kids, fewer kids on the road, less or fewer cars on the road, sorry. Less pollution in the air and less global climate change. It also means fewer crashes and serious injuries for San Mateo and neighboring residents who bike. Two years ago, Humboldt was the site of a crash that left the sixty-eight-year-old San Mateo resident on a bike. In a coma with severe head trauma, multiple broken ribs and a broken collarbone. Cyclists aren't the only vulnerable users to see safety improvement, however. I've seen many different types of people. In the bike lanes, including elderly residents on seated scooters, skateboarders, rollerbladers and others. This frees up the sidewalk for those on foot. As the driving lanes are more narrow now, auto and truck traffic seems to have slowed slightly. Lowering the risk of serious injuries to pedestrians, especially the hundreds of students who walk to school. In this densely populated area that has traditionally had the highest crash rates in the city. Keep in mind that the primary beneficiaries of these bike lanes and walk safety improvements are lower income individuals. Who cannot afford the exorbitant price of owning and maintaining a car in the Bay Area. Studies show that these groups most frequently bear the burden of unsafe streets and traffic violence. I know that there's still a lot of work to be done to make the streets in the area safer for vulnerable users. I urge the council to move forward with traffic calming and pedestrian-focused projects. That will appeal to additional community members in this area. Thanks so much.
Thank you. And Madam Mayor, that concludes public comment.
Uh, okay. Thank you so much for everyone who stayed with us. It's near midnight. Um, it means a lot to have so many folks in the room with us and it's. And it really is a testament to the passion about um, our community and protecting our community and doing right by our community. So. I really do appreciate everyone's input and I'm interested in with us. So, um, does, does anyone have any follow-up questions? Oh, yeah. Yes, okay. We have a request to take a quick five-minute bio break. It's uh, before we deliberate. Bear with us. We'll, we'll be back in five minutes. Thank you for your patience. Okay, thank you, um. Okay, and, um, and we're back after a brief interlude and, um. So if, I, I guess. You know, I think, I think a lot about, you know, about justice and I think a lot about the need to. To protect the trust of the community, that trust is foundational to the health of our democracy. When we lose the public trust. Um, it compromises people's participation, their faith in the system. Um, in of government and, and all along the way. Um, when we were, when the neighborhood was organizing and saying, we want investment in this community. We need investment in this community. We want, we want um, infrastructure to slow down um, speeding cars. We want better light systems. We want, um, you know, we want more trees on our, um, you know, on our streetscapes and. We want to see, we want some of these crazy potholes to get fixed and, and to not have our streets flooding like. We, the community was clearly asking for investment. The question was not that there are no needs that need investment. The question uh, was how do we meet, how do we use investment to meet those needs? And I think there, there was a very real mismatch in prioritizing bike lanes that the majority of the community was not asking for. Um, at, at great cost um, to an already very um, dire parking situation. And, and the, the fixes that were promised in, um, you know. In, in the deliberation that some of the speakers spoke to. Um, included further reducing parking through the Red Car program and then programs that haven't come to fruition. And haven't been well utilized, like the King, you know, the, the parking, uh, King, uh, the King, um, parking lot. Um, the RPP program which hasn't come to fruition. So I, you know, what I'm seeing in the community. Is I'm seeing our, our, you know, our, our faith communities that are providing. Critical. Levels of care and support. I'm talking basic needs like folks who need boxes of food to get through the week. Those are the folks that are getting taxed by parking tickets. Um, we have, I've seen cases where um, our neighbors who have, um. Have large lots, they want to create onsite parking, additional onsite parking on their own. Parking on, on their own properties, run into barriers about even creating additional parking spaces. On their own property. So like there's, there are um, policies that are preventing. Homeowners from creating onsite parking on their own property. And, and it's, you know, it's, it's just, um, you know, the neighborhood is getting pinched in so many ways. And I think that when we saw this, this agenda item come up and the opportunity to, you know, the. The, the ask is receive an introduction and overview of San Mateo Complete Streets Plan and provide feedback in a draft of community engagement plan. You know, I think the community is asking, wh- how does North Central factor into this plan? How do we repair what's clearly not working? And that, and how, is there a way, um, you know, I, I just, I would hate to leave this conversation. With another situation where we're told to sit and wait. Um, we, there needs to be, uh, you know, there needs to be a plan. There needs to be an expectation. That when the community comes forward and said, says, we need something better. This is clearly not working. We care about bicycling. I am a bicyclist. My kids bike to school. Well, really, they scoot to school. Um, but, you know, it's not about, we, you know, we hate bicycles. And we don't want bicycle, bike lanes in our community. We want, we want to create spaces that will work for everybody. And the trade-offs of this design were, the costs were too high and it's clearly not working. So. I guess for me, there's like a little bit of a. Uh, attention in the framing of this issue and it what feels like inflexibility. Because I want us to talk about complete streets. I wish we could get to a place where we're talking about complete streets for the North Central neighborhood specifically. To repair what is clearly not working. Is there a way to reformat the plan? Or re-scope the plan to make it more neighborhood-specific? I'm asking.
Okay, yeah, so. The. I think, you know, we, staff spoke with a consultant on the, on the brief break and, um, I think it's important. It, it, it remains important to keep the two things separate. We need to keep the grant clean, so to speak. And, and do two separate efforts, but with that being said, I think we had initially said this would need to be a sequential. Effort and, and, you know, in speaking with, with the consultant, you know, it, it becomes a financial matter. And in terms of making it a parallel effort. So if it is council's pleasure, um, you know, we can come back. Um, and at a, at a future council meeting in the near future with an appropriation request. To do a separate circulation study focused on North Central that I think. Is more comprehensive at the ground level, um, with some factoring in some of the things that were, were discussed and brought up tonight. Uh, with respect to the, the, the uh, characteristics of the neighborhood. That, that again can be done in parallel with the, the work that's being done on the Complete Streets project.
I'm happy to hear that there's movement and, um, and I, 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 I got, I guess I want to just push for a little bit more clarity. Because I think that, you know, there's, there's certainly, I've been, you know, part of one, one of my council priorities was to do a circulation study for North Central. And North Shoreview and then, um, through council member Hedges' suggestion, it sort of expanded even beyond that. So I've been asking for a comprehensive circulation study for a long time, right? And it's great to see that that's something that could actually get accomplished. I think that the, the specific request. Though, and I don't, so I don't want to lose the specificity of what is being asked today and tonight. Which is really looking at a redesign of, um, of the bike lane.
I, I think what we would propose is a component of it would be a circulation assessment, but really, like you noted. A North Central-specific Complete Streets Plan, right? That takes a look at roadway options. That we didn't have the opportunity to address in terms of also getting council support for. You know, what fits here, what are the priorities and, um, do we convert streets into one way? So it would be, uh, but it has a. To our city manager's point, it has a very specific circulation focus because we are going above and beyond to take a look at. Can we meet, um, you know, our safety concerns that drove the bicycle project? Um, and can we do it in a way that retains parking but changes the, the circulation through the neighborhood? So it'd be folk, you know, much more focused, but it would be under the. What, what do complete streets look like in, in this community?
Okay, well, I think that's our, um, you know, for me, it's, it's, uh, it's asking another, the community to take another. Leap of faith that we do the study and that, um, you know, that there's. and that, you know, that there's, that there's resources committed to doing the study. And then potentially, we look at, you know, the next round of CDGB funding and what, what an implementation plan could look like. So I guess I just want to make sure that, you know, we in this room, right? In front of everyone are talking about what lining up the ducks actually looks like. So this is not a study that sits on a shelf unfunded for another 10 years. There's a very real acute sense of urgency that I feel to get this right. If we're, if we're talking about accomplishing the foundation of restoring trust and community. Would you like to turn on your mic?
Building on the mayor's comments, I think tonight has been a night, the whole agenda has been a night of listening and learning. If you think about it, the issues with stormwater drains and the Marina Lagoon, that neighborhood has been talking about those issues for years. And tonight, we were able to come forward with an analysis that said, here's how we address those issues. The community has been very active in North Central, talking about bike lanes, but parking long before bike lanes were even an issue. And I think that we heard very clearly, and you articulated, that this was something that was important. And I think that staffs thought, oh, let's address that and let's dig into it is the right thing. But let's also continue with complete streets all across the city. And what I would hope is that tonight, we not only, as staff is doing here, begin to say, how do we address the immediate concerns that have been raised here? But also say, how do we learn from this to, in anything we do? Whether it's complete streets across the city or, you know, elsewhere. And I'll stop here because I don't think you're finished. But, but I think this is a night of both addressing specific issues as well as learning for how do we go forward? So that's an important thing.
Yeah, so I, I appreciate, you know, staff's approach to trying to solve for expediting a study. I certainly would support this coming back for council's consideration for an allocation for a dual-check simultaneous study that would get, I mean, it would be an incredible step forward, something I've been asking for, for years. So I, I think that would be great. And then, you know, if we were able to, you know, line that up with the next round of CDGB. I mean, I guess, I guess my question would be then, would we still fall on the same timeline in the 24? Yeah?
So I, there's definitely an opportunity, and this is what we checked with, with our consultant on, to be able to do this in parallel so that we've got two plans that are also not disjointed. And we can take a look at the funding that we currently have. We would go back and assess scope, look at CDBG funding and take a look at whether there's enough there or if we would need additional.
Okay.
Or create that.
That's the beginnings of a how we get things done. Okay, and I guess, as another aside, I just wanted to say, not, not necessarily limited to North Central, but I think just generally speaking, I wonder, you know, how or if the Complete Streets Plan looks at sort of the quick build implementation model? Like, how are we as policymakers sort of treating that as a, as a better way to get to where we're trying to go? You know, one of the things that troubles me, you know, and I know it's, you know, it's just about limited resources, but one of the things that I think is really hard for community to, you know, understand the benefits of, of bicycle network is because we're building bicycle networks in fragmented chunks that don't ever, or that might connect to each other, you know, 100 years from now, at the pace that we're going, but don't in any way relate to each other in, in today, or tomorrow, or five years from now. So, um, so I think that that's, that to me is, is, is another area, just in terms of the way that we implement, that sort of counteracts the, the community education, sort of the transition, the learning opportunity, the way that, you know, I think that we can develop better practices for learning, studying, analysis and implementation. And so I guess that's a follow-up question I have, but just in terms of, as we think about complete streets, what, how are we considering quick build?
So I'll address that. You all made, you know, a council priority for us to focus on implementing high priority projects on the bicycle and also really expanding on our, we do have a pedestrian master plan, but it, it has a few gaps, right? And we're struggling with how to implement it. So one of the pieces, based on the proposed work plan, looks at, specifically on the bicycle front, how can we develop, develop a quick build strategy? So that's part of our sort of, you know, work plans presented to you all tonight. Part of that would be to assess, is there a way to build a, a network so that we don't have this, these disjointed segments? But also, you know, take on the opportunity to implement some of the permanence as we, as we pave, maybe extending those networks through also adding quick build. So yes, we are working on developing that strategy.
I'm glad to hear that. That's really encouraging. Okay, does anyone, I've been doing a lot of talking, does anyone else have anything?
I have something to say if it's.
Yes, Councilmember Hedges.
So.
Wait one sec, Ridge.
Okay, be happy to wait.
Please go ahead.
Thank you. As I think I've told one of the council members, I lived in North Central for nine years, rode my bicycle to work every day. And when I went north, I used to use San Mateo Drive and California Drive because it was the safest even before we had bike lanes. So I'm a very strong person for bike lanes. But anyone who understands North Central should have known taking out 200 and some parking places would be a huge problem. And it's not just a problem of not being, it's a problem of perception. Think about this, people who are gardeners, who are plumbers, who are garage door repair people, and, and people with multiple members of their family that have to work to pay the bills are going to have automobiles. And so. So it goes even farther, just to deviate from talking about North Central for a minute. The four vehicles that have been stolen from Harbor Town were all work trucks with tool racks. That is the target. So many of the folks there are paranoid about losing their trucks. At a neighborhood meeting in Shoreview recently, one of the members of the audience told me that he lost his truck, that he needs to work with $5,000 for the tools. If you don't have full replacement in your insurance, then those are all depreciated. And you've got to come up with the money. This is really a big issue for people. If they can't park their work trucks where they can see them from the home or have the camera on them, they're very nervous because you not only lose the truck, you lose the tools to do your work and you lose the ability to go to work. So these are huge issues and North Central is not alone on this. I'm having some people in my district say, those folks in North Central, that's horrible. Are they planning on doing anything like that to us? And the answer is no, we're going to find a way to have parking and bike lanes as well. And my feeling about bike lanes, and I think most people who bike would agree. If you have parking on the outside of the bike lane, the bike lane is protected. It's all so protected, more so, not completely, with door openings and running in the doors. So we have to find a way to do this. If it's having one-way streets, if it's having parking only on one side and doing a road diet, we've got to find a way to put the parking in there as well. So for now, that's all I'm going to say, except for, we need to do a parallel, parallel work for North Central to make sure that we're working toward a solution for them while we're going through this assessment of the complete streets. And I'm very supportive of complete streets. However, there have been no, nothing done in Shoreview or Parkside for complete streets. And that needs to change too. Thank you.
It's a question of staff and it's a little off topic, but what would it take to re-stripe the curb in front of the Macedonia Church? They have 330 families, and I heard it said again tonight, that go for pickup there every Tuesday. If we could rezone that or re-stripe it white with a 15-minute wait period and then not have enforcement on Sundays, that would alleviate a lot of their churchgoers' problems. But I, I don't know, I mean, do we have to put a study together? Or is that something that we can just mandate you to do or request for you to do?
Mandate us to do anything, right? No, we, we were, the reason why we painted the, the curbs red was based on feedback of safety and poor sight lines. And we were actually, we were asked to take a look at specific intersections. There, there's obviously an issue here. So I think, so Ellen, we can go back and assess, you know, there's a balancing act in terms of sight distance. But in terms of needs, we can take a look at repainting that curb.
Even if we could just get 10 or 12 parking spaces that were 15 minutes, that would alleviate a lot of their ability to pick up. And then if we didn't have enforcement on the weekends for Sunday, that'd allow them to go to Sunday service without, without, you know, being ticketed.
So we can go back.
Thank you.
I support that too. Okay, looks like we have.
Great idea, I support it.
Yes, so I mean, I think there's a lot, there's been a lot of really great ideas that have come out of this and good learning. I appreciate Councilmember Newsome raising that specific issue. I think, you know, I wonder if, you know, the North Central Complete Streets Plan can also look at, for example, onsite parking creation, right? So that that's something, you know, that, that we're supporting property owners to do. If they're willing to create parking on their own property, like, we want them to be encouraged to do that and not prevented. And so, you know, I wonder if there, you know, there are over, sort of overlay policy opportunities that we could be thinking about.
Yeah, I mean, certainly. I mean, it's a, it's a municipal code issue. And, and I think, so, I mean, it can be looked at in parallel with this, as, as a part of this. It would be, I think, you know, we'd really want to look, look at it closely in terms of the municipal code and making sure we're not creating any unintended consequences. I mean, because that's, there's a reason why we have that code. And so, but if, it's, it's, it's municipal code, so if council wants us to look at it, we look at it.
Yeah, so I, I, I would say that, you know, the, what, what I think really didn't work and the learning and takeaway from the process of the, you know, the North Central Bike Lane Project and Implementation was that a lot of the solutions, the safety solutions ended up removing more parking, right? And so what are the policy solutions? What are the policy opportunities to create more parking, right? How do we net? Because, you know, there, we might, you know, it's, just to set expectations, you know, if we're trying to make room for everyone, you know, all these competing needs, it might mean we don't recover 100% of the 200 parking spaces that were lost. But then how do we recoup those, you know, parking spaces through good policy? You know, in terms of incentivizing or, or supporting more, you know, onsite parking creation, right? There's, so the, so these are sort of the, the things I think that I would like us to be looking at more, you know, comprehensively as part of the Complete Streets Plan. And with that, I mean, does anyone have any last comments? Councilmember Lorraine?
I'd like to thank the community for coming out tonight and staying all these hours to only get a few moments to give some more feedback on how this project is negatively impacting them. I also appreciate the, the presentation tonight and the opportunity to pursue a Complete Streets Plan in our city. I think clearly, had we been able to complete a Complete Streets Plan before doing the North Central Bike Project, it would have been different. And I appreciate the mayor's questions and comments and staff's replies to them. I agree with the majority of what was said and, and certainly with regard to not waiting until after this plan is done to seek how to make North Central better. It would have been awfully awkward to go into communities asking for input on this plan before, you know, with, with the idea that we wouldn't talk about this until afterward. It, it wouldn't have worked. I don't think it would have served us to do it that way. So I, I think that was a useful and helpful step forward. And I am certainly interested in supporting funding to make that possible. I think we have learned a lot since last year. A, a number of things have happened since that process began that I think are positive and will allow us to do better going forward. Going through the process as we did, for what it's worth, has, I think, led us to what we're talking about tonight. We, as others had mentioned, you know, I think, I think the council made a decision to go ahead with, you know, the project partly because there was an opportunity to make use of funding in, in a, for a project that was seen as potentially providing some good to North Central. That was in fact the aim. And yet, you know, I think there were, as has been mentioned, some pressures to pursue it partly because of money, because the bike plan is not funded. And because it doesn't make sense to make one piece of a bike lane. We, we needed to figure out how we were going to make this network that the previous plan process envisioned. And so when we saw an opportunity to take a big piece, a piece that could potentially make North Central better, that was, that was part of the idea. Since then, we have passed Measure CC through the efforts of the mayor and others, and of course, the voters. You know, and there's been a new council priority, as, as Director Mitch mentioned, to look into completing the bike plan in, in a, in a better way, in, in a way that can hopefully piece some of these things together. And so I think that plus this plan can allow us to do a better job going forward with finding ways to make the, the, the small bits of land we have on the roads work as best as possible for everybody. So I, I am fully in support of, of prioritizing this, this North Central circulation study so that we can, you know, I, I think. this, this North Central circulation study so that we can, you know, I, I, I think by doing that, we'll, we'll have put in some, some extra time and effort to, to get it right. And I, I do think that it's important that we do that before we look into other projects. So I'll, I'll just leave it there and thank everybody for your time.
Thank you. Much has been said and I'm not going to repeat, but what I do want to say is that what happened here tonight, while it was difficult, it is also how it's supposed to work. If there is an issue that the community has, the community gets together and the community comes and speaks its perspective. And then on the other hand, we have the council listening and we have the staff that went out in the hall while we were all on a bio break and came up with a plan. You came up with a plan tonight to figure out how to get us into this room so we could keep the meeting going. And you came up with a plan to how to keep things going. And we all can do better and we all will do better. But I think this is a really good thing. And I think that going back to what, what the original presentation was about, it was all about how do we do community outreach? And I think we all have learned a lot tonight about doing community outreach and reminding. But also, and what I hear is talk to people early, be iterative and be prepared to change based on the feedback that you hear. And I think that is something that the Complete Streets Plan will take into account. I think that's what the, the circulation plan in North Central will take into account. And I just think that's a great mantra for everything. So I just would like to thank everyone here for their role in moving us forward on a number of different fronts. Let's not forget, we did storm drains, which is something we've been trying to do for years and years and years. So it's, it's been a tough, long night, but thank you. And let's, let's keep going forward with this energy.
I don't really have anything to add and I want to wrap up in the, and be brief. So, but, but thank you for everyone's input and participation today. And, you know, I, I think I'm committed with everyone here tonight to make sure that, you know, we move forward with the new plan and we, we learn from mistakes and we, at the same time, where we fix the mistakes that we've made in North Central and figure out ways to address that. So thanks for everyone's participation tonight and yesterday as well.
Well, I, I leave this meeting, you know, always an optimist, but with eyes open. And I think that, you know, this is a great example of community holding a leadership to account and to the city to account. This, the opportunity to, to run this study in parallel is, I think, a really great potential step in the right direction. And if that can be synced up with an analysis about, you know, CDGB funding opportunities for, you know, immediate implementation, then all the better. You know, I, I want to emphasize the sense of urgency. And while I appreciate the learning, which is really what, you know, what we're all doing all the time is learning and iterating and trying to do better. I also want to acknowledge that a lot of the hardest learnings, a lot of the hardest lessons happen on the backs of my neighborhood and our neighborhood and people of color and low income people. And so, you know, while we want to dress up and feel good about learning, acknowledge that this learning happens in an inequitable way, you know, and has for centuries. And, and so the job is to right the ship, right, is to write the direction so that we are actually enacting our values and implementing the policy in a way that, that benefits community and supports community equitably. That is who we strive to be. And so I, I don't want to leave this room without that acknowledgement that there has been very real harm caused to my neighborhood and my community. And while I appreciate the openness and the open mindedness to learn and integrate and the need to do that, that doesn't erase that fact. And so we still have a long way to go to repair. And I will be a voice to ensure that that drama gets beaten because that's what it requires is people showing up. And so I appreciate everyone being here through this with us and keeping some faith and the hope that when we speak, we will be listened to, we will be heard and acknowledged. And sometimes it takes a couple times, right? More than a couple. So before we adjourn, I do actually have reports and announcements. And does anyone else have reports and announcements? Yes. Okay.
I do.
Councilmember Lorraine?
Thank you. I understand that each council member received an email from Commissioner John Ebner with a study from the San Francisco Estuary Institute and, and some interest in potentially having a study session about the contents of that with regard to potentially including it in our general plan update, environmental impact report. I just want to note that I sent a note to Zach and Zachary Doll and Christina Horstberger asking whether indeed it's already being integrated. I've spoken with Drew Corbett a little bit about it as well. And so I just am bringing that context up to say that I, I'd like to ask the, the council if enough people might be interested in potentially receiving or being part of a study session, if it seems to be warranted, i.e. the council, it, it's not, if it weren't being included and, and council may need to learn more and potentially weigh in on whether to include it. I, I think it's also possible that, that it is being included. And if so, perhaps the, the request can be withdrawn out of respect for council's time and the, and the, the study session schedule, which I know is, is going to be increasing. But with that potential caveat, I wanted to see if others might be interested in, in a study session item potentially contributed to by One Shoreline and Len Mateman, who has some thoughts on the topic.
Well, I, I think that, that question came in this afternoon, I believe. And so it, I don't, staff hasn't answered it as of yet. So my, my recommendation would be to, to have staff answer the question. I can share it with the entire council. And then if the answer is not, you know, that we're going, that this is going to be incorporated into the, the general plan update under which you, you would see it as, as the general plan was forward, then I think that would be the appropriate time at, at the next meeting to determine if, if we should have a specific study session related to this subject, if that's amenable to, to council.
I guess the reason why I didn't do it that way is because I, I think there was some concern about the, about having the study session in time to factor into the environmental impact report. So if, if we were to bring it up next time, do you think, Drew, that, that would not disrupt the possibility for a council to weigh in on that?
I, I think that if we get, even if we get the direction tonight, it's unlikely that we'd come back at the first meeting in April. I mean, just, you know, so I think, you know, if we, I, I think we can sort of plan based on any feedback we get tonight. If the answer is that it will not be, it's not planned to be incorporated in the, in the general plan update that we can start to plan for a study session and get confirmation at the next, at the next meeting to, to solidify it.
Okay, thank you. I'll withdraw.
Councilmember Hedges, did you have an announcement?
Yes, I just wanted to say that there are areas in my, in District Four that are starting to organize and rekindle their neighborhood associations. Very proud of them because they didn't want to call it a homeowner's association, but include the renters in their neighborhood too. So I'm very happy that's going forward and have hopes that the whole neighborhoods on District Four will get organized.
Too quickly, one following up on Councilmember Hedges. There's a new Burrell Neighborhood Association that has just started. So I'm seeing a lot more neighborhood activity and that's exciting. And then there are too many people left, but there's a very important community meeting happening this Saturday from 10 a.m. to noon at the Beresford Senior Center over in Alameda because our city manager is retiring at the end of June. And while we are not pleased about it, we have to find a replacement. And this meeting on Saturday is all about getting community input for what is important in a, a city manager. So for everyone who's still here, tell everyone you know, this is a really important time for you to give your feedback because this kind of meeting is the result of, you know, a, a strong city manager. So please, thank you.
Dominique Hoskins has a museum, Black History Museum, that was to be open only for the month of, of February. And it's been extended through the end of this month. So we still have another week or so. So just throwing out a pitch that if you haven't checked it out, it's a really nice exhibit and it's in Redwood City. But you can look it up at Dominique Hoskins, blackhistorymuseum.org.
Okay. So stay with me here. I, I actually was reading through our meeting minutes from the last meeting and the recap of the, the general plan land use section to me was was not what I understood the takeaway and final determination to be. And, and so I would like to ask that we re-agendize this at the next meeting in a very limited scope. What I thought that the takeaway was what in terms of determining what is studied in the EIR, when I was discussing polling, my, my suggestion was that we, we, we study all iterations at all levels and that we poll for all levels. And, and based on polling that we make an informed decision about what we take to the ballot. That was, that was what I was essentially saying. That is what I was saying. And my impression was that I had at least three nodding heads. So I, I think that this warrants further discussion because it seems to not be what is reflected in the meeting minutes. So, so I ask that we clarify that, that in fact, that was what we're, what was agreed upon by a majority of council. So I'm asking, you know, I'm asking to re-agendize in a limited scope to clarify the final takeaways here that. For, for old business, item 11. So the, the specific, the specific thing that I was saying, and, and it was, you know, along.